Welcome to the San Carlos City Council meeting for May 9, 2016. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any changes to the order of the agenda tonight?
None this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Any from any of my colleagues? Do we have a report from closed session?
There is no report, Mr. Mayor.
Then we'll move on with item five, Council Communications and Announcements. And we will start with Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have two brief items tonight. One is, you know, this council has talked several times over the last few months about the ongoing housing crisis in San Mateo County, particularly for folks who are renting. And there's a new program that our friends in the federal government are trying to get up off the ground that has sort of an interesting name. It's called No Voucher Left Behind. And it's, as you may know, the federal government does provide vouchers on a need basis for renters. There aren't anywhere near enough to go around. As a result, there's a lottery, but interestingly enough, the lottery often gets unfulfilled because a lot of potential participants in it don't even know that the vouchers exist. And the idea behind No Voucher Left Behind would be that each of the cities in San Mateo County would basically partner with the feds to kind of get the word out by putting a little carrot in the game, by offering some additional money, for example, for every voucher that was used in the city of San Carlos. I'm talking the order of like $250 a voucher, something like that. So what I wanted to do is to see if there was any interest from my colleagues in having staff look into that and come back with a report to us so we could decide whether we want to participate in it or not.
To the Chair, do you know, is it $250 a month or a one-shot?
Oh, no, it's, sorry, I should have said that's a one-shot.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments from colleagues here?
I'm not sure I have a, oops.
Sorry about that. Not sure I have a problem with it.
No, I learned about it. It doesn't.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not asking people to approve it, obviously, just, yeah. All right, so we'll add that to the agenda. And the other item I just wanted to mention is a few meetings back, we had a review of the plans for parking involving Wheeler Plaza. And during the course of that discussion, I forget who it was who mentioned it, but one of my colleagues asked the people who were working the problem on the Wheeler project side, if there were any problems, to make sure they contact that person. And I just wanted to say that I hope people remember if there's a problem going on in the city, please contact all of us, because we are all in a position to do something and we all tend to have different thoughts about how to do things. So I just wanted to add that to the mix. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mark. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hadn't, didn't have any council-related business over the last couple of weeks, but I would like to say that since I wasn't at the last council meeting, I'd like to offer my sincere sympathies to the Ritchie family at this time. It should be remembered, though, that this tragedy affected two San Carlos families and both are suffering right now. Both face unimaginable pain and uncertainty and life for both has been changed forever. Since the most important responsibility of this council is to ensure public safety, the residents of San Carlos should know that we will be looking at all possible ways to make San Carlos Avenue safer for everyone. It'll take some time, but we all know that it must be done. The council and city staff and the Sheriff's Department are dedicated to making this happen. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ron. Matt? Bub?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I have a few pictures I wanted to share. So I had the opportunity to participate in the city's Earth Day event that we had a little over a week ago. And this was an event at Burton Park that included a kids concert. It was an effort to let people know about all the things that they can do in their daily lives in their households to help promote sustainability and, let me go back here. And so the city had a booth, Sustainable San Mateo County had a booth, PG&E had a booth. There were a number of booths from local businesses and local organizations. So I really appreciate all the work that went into that and I think it was a great event. I also had the opportunity to be a judge at Chickens Ball, which I have never yet had to do, I had a chance to do, so, and I know Ron was a judge this past weekend, but I, this is a couple of the participants and I think everybody knows Gene Danner, who's been a longtime member of Chickens Ball. So for those of you who don't know, Chickens Ball has been part of San Carlos, an institution in San Carlos since 1940 and it raises money for the San Carlos School District every year. I attended a JPA meeting for Peninsula Clean Energy, as I've talked about in the past relatively frequently, since we're meeting now twice a month. Peninsula Clean Energy is a joint powers authority that the city of San Carlos joined with 20 other, with all 20 cities in San Mateo County. And what it's going to do is provide an alternative to PG&E for businesses and residents to get their electricity. And it's going to provide it a higher renewable content adder below the current cost being paid for by PG&E. We're moving very aggressively and quickly to roll this program out by October. The main meeting, since the last council meeting, addressed kind of the marketing plan. So every resident, every business is going to get four postcards that are going to talk about the switch over for PG&E to Peninsula Clean Energy and give folks an opportunity to stick with PG&E if they choose to do so. Lastly, I have some exciting news from the San Mateo County Transportation Authority on which I serve and I represent the South County. This year, there was a call for projects for shuttles and San Carlos applied for a shuttle, an eastside commuter shuttle that would pick up at San Carlos, at the San Carlos Caltrain Station and take commuters to the businesses on the east side. This is meant to reduce the number of single occupancy vehicle trips that come into San Carlos to make it easier for people who would want to commute to Caltrain, but it's too far to walk, to a local business. The TA provided 75% of the cost of the shuttle and I know we're working, staff is working to get some buy-in from local businesses who will be benefiting from the shuttle. The other one, which is the bus route, which is known as the 46B line, for those of you who remember it, which went up into the hills and out to Tierra Linda and Carlmont, it's a bus line we've been working to revive, to try and reduce the number of cars that go into that very congested area in the morning to drop kids off. Samtrans is the bus provider, obviously. They did something very innovative in this case. They applied to a different agency for funding. So Samtrans applied to the TA to get funding for a bus route and the TA agreed and provided 50% of the funding. So that's a very important step in trying to get this bus route up and running again. So I just want to thank all the staff, thank Mark for his participation, thank Tara for her work on this. So I'm excited that, you know, we're making a lot of progress towards providing some other public transportation options in the city of San Carlos. And that is all I have tonight. Yes, Mark?
I'd just like to say that I appreciate your thanking me, but I'd like to say that we all should thank you because you've obviously done an awful lot of work to get this to happen and I look forward to seeing it come together.
Thank you, yeah. We can be the first writers together. I mean, the other thing that I should say is that there are two local parents who've been involved in the PTA, Meredith Park and Don Brozek, I believe is how you pronounce her last name, who've been very active in this circulating petitions, working on this project for a couple of years. And Mark and I have only gotten involved in the last few months, but they've done, they've done an outstanding job, so.
And if I may, Gene Danner actually helped as well.
Gene as well, that's right.
When she wasn't working at Chickens Ball.
Gene does a lot. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item 5B, Staff Comments on City Administrative Business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to report on an update on PG&E Transmission Line 147. This won't be news to the council, but I do want to make the information available to the public. As you're aware, over the course of about the last year, PG&E has been working to try to do inline inspection of the line, also known as pigging of the line. And they've had a number of problem areas that they had to do some construction on to allow their testing and probe device to successfully navigate the line. Last week, they were successful in their tests of Line 147, which means the data has been gathered and will now take some months to be analyzed. During the testing process, the CPUC allowed PG&E to raise up the pressure in the line because it's an important component of the testing process. Once testing was completed, the pressure in the line was reduced back down to 125 PSI-G, where it will remain until the results of the testing are in, delivered not only to the city but the CPUC, and then ultimately it'll be the CPUC who would have to rule on the future pressure increases of Line 147.
Thanks to the Chair. Jeff, that's great news. Can we get our hands on the raw data?
I believe we will get copies of the raw data, yeah.
And hopefully we can have our own expert look at it. And I don't mean to in any way disparage PG&E's expertise, but given everything that's happened, I wouldn't mind, personally, I wouldn't have mind having another set of eyes that are working directly for us look at it.
Something I think the council can talk about when we see it come back with the actual data. And I know Greg had mentioned to me that he's got a short report that he'd like to present to council this evening as well.
Absolutely. This, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This comes out of some of the comments from the city attorney budget process. So I am pleased to report that my office went down to the League of Cities Conference in Newport Beach. I was not there, but I reviewed the papers and there were some very interesting cases about SEQA, wireless antennas, and Public Records Act that are favorable to cities. And in particular, on the Public Records Act, there was a division in the different districts about whether or not an inadvertent release of attorney-client privileged information would be a permanent waiver of that privilege. And the Supreme Court of the state has, in my opinion, correctly ruled that an inadvertent release of attorney-client privileged information does not permanently waive the privilege and the cities, or if that happens, a city can assert that it was inadvertent and therefore the privilege should still apply and the records can be further excluded. The SEQA cases are kind of refine some of the court's prior rulings. And then on, one of the issues I think that was unresolved on wireless antennas, which we see quite a few of, is what is the final decision by the, by the local authority on, that would trigger the shock clock that you may have heard of in the new wireless rules? And the court, federal courts out of Maine have ruled that the final decision is not the planning level, but at the conclusion of the appeal period. So I think that was something that I always thought made logical sense, that you couldn't have a final decision until the local administrative review process had been completed. So the court in Maine struck down the wireless industry's attack on a local decision based upon the fact that they hadn't exhausted and completed the appeal process. So that's the highlights of the conference. There's more to come, though.
All right. Thanks very much, Greg. I did want to just add one other thing, which, how could we forget, that the city council just completed about 12 hours of budget hearings over the last two weeks. This was an opportunity for us to expand out our budget process, to include performance metrics, to spend more time than we've had in the past, really digging into what are the goals of our different city departments? How effective have they been in meeting those goals? What are their plans for the next year? And how does their budget, either increasing or decreasing that budget, help us achieve those goals? So it was a great opportunity for us. We made substantial, we gave substantial feedback to the staff, including things like increasing our reserve policy, adding, we put in about $1 million for pedestrian safety in light of some of the recent accidents and comments that we've had from the public. Made a lot of other smaller adjustments. That budget's going to come back for a vote in June, but I just wanted to, again, thank the staff, thank Jeff for leading this process. I think it was a very, a very effective thing. It was, it allowed, I think, both the council to have a deeper understanding, the public to have a deeper understanding of how the city spends its money, and give the staff an opportunity to really spend some time thinking about what each department is trying to achieve. So, thank you. Okay, we have four presentations tonight. And I'm going to start with the first one, which is to administer the oath of office to our new deputy fire chief, Dave Pucci. So Dave, please come on up. I'm going to say a couple of words from here and then I'm going to come up and give you your pin, your badge. So we're very lucky to have Dave join us in the city of San Carlos as our new deputy fire chief. As many people know, we've had an agreement with the Redwood City Fire Department for a number of years now. Our most recent deputy fire chief, Stan Mopin, who's here with us this evening, was recently promoted to be the fire chief for all of Redwood City. And Stan, you know, leaves big shoes to fill. He led us from a relatively tumultuous time with reorganization of our fire department to a really smooth-running operation that's received a lot of praise from the community. But I'm very, I'm very pleased with the selection. Dave is a nearly 20-year veteran of the Redwood City Fire Department. He's got his start as a police officer and was a cop in the city of Mountain View before switching over to the fire department. He's, in addition to most recently being a battalion chief, he, he recently oversaw the Emergency Operations Center, which brings a lot of great expertise to our city. And in San Carlos, you know, even though we've taken this model of public safety where we've joined with larger agencies, which has allowed us to reduce costs while at the same time getting access to more resources, we really pride ourselves on taking a very local approach. And we want people and personnel and leadership who work in the city to have a local touch, to be able to build relationships within City Hall, within the community. And, you know, I spent about an hour with Dave a couple of weeks ago. We had a very nice coffee and I can say I'm very confident that he brings that demeanor to the job. So I think he's going to be a great addition to the city of San Carlos. So welcome, Dave, and I'm going to come up and pin your badge.
I think Dave's also a trained EMT in case the pinning goes wrong, right?
If you can raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties for which you are about to enter?
Thank you.
Okay. Got you.
Would you care to say a few words?
Sure, I'll be, I'll be very brief. Injury-free, thank you for that. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you very much. I'm very honored to be here tonight and thank you for this recognition. I consider myself extremely lucky to be here. A little over 19 years ago, when I was first hired by Redwood City, I had no idea how lucky I was. I'm lucky to have the boss that I have today, and I'm not just saying that because he's sitting behind me right now. But with the command staff, the firefighters, the captains, the administrative staff for our fire department, they do a very difficult job and they make it look easy day-to-day. And that makes my transition into this job so much easier today. Thank you for the welcome. I've had a very good welcome with all the city staff and I look forward to developing those relationships with all of you and all the city staff and I look forward to the challenge of continuing to deliver a very high level of fire service to the community of San Carlos. So thank you very much.
Thank you. [applause]
Congratulations, Dave. We look forward to working with you. Okay, for our second proclamation, we, I have the honor and privilege of declaring May as Bike Month for the city of San Carlos, May 2016 as National Bike Month. And here to accept the award, we have, I believe, Catherine Levy and Cameron Adams. Are you here this evening? Come on up. So as you're coming up, I'm going to introduce you. And this is really the entire Adams family, a couple of, oh, minus one. So is that Duncan?
Duncan.
Duncan and Cameron, I like your name. But it says that you guys bike to school regularly and you bike to work regularly and you lead recreational mountain biking groups for teens on weekends, is that right? Well, that's excellent. All right, well, I'm going to come up and give this proclamation. So one of the great things, obviously, about living in Northern California and living in such a, you know, nice climate is the ability to get outside. And I think, as everybody knows, you know, bicycling has huge benefits. It has personal health benefits. It also benefits the environment because you're not creating greenhouse gases when you're driving to work. I'm a pretty avid cyclist, although I haven't been in previous, in recent years, but I did bike to work most recently in 2010, over the course of the warm months, and it had a huge positive impact on my life. So maybe I will use you guys as inspiration and start biking to work. But I am, I am going to be doing a bike-to-work event on Thursday morning, starting in Redwood City, or starting in San Carlos, and we're going to bike to Redwood City. So I'd invite anyone to come and participate, but there's going to be bike-to-work days and bike-to-work month events all up and down the peninsula. So I'll read a brief part of this proclamation. So it says, whereas the number of people using bikelists for daily commuting across the nation has increased by 62% since the year 2000, and bicycling in San Mateo County has increased to 3.4% of all trips, and the events of Bike Month help to increase the use of bicycles by people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds. And whereas Bike Month aligns with the city of San Carlos' goals to improve health, livability, prosperity, and the environment, be it resolved that I, Cameron Johnson, Mayor of the city of San Carlos, hereby declare May 2016 as National Bike Month. So congratulations, thank you.
[applause]
Thanks for being an inspiration and an example to others. Give this proclamation to you. Would you guys like to say any few words about what it's like to bike? Okay.
Well, so, well, first of all, thank you so much, all of the city council. It's an honor for one to get this award, but also just you've made the streets so much safer. And with everyone else backing it all up and keeping the streets safe, it just creates a more healthy environment for kids of all ages and for anyone just to bike to work and to school. So it's, I've loved biking. My dad grew up doing it and my mom bikes, used to bike to work every day, even though it's really far compared to what I'm used to. But, I mean, I just, I love biking and I love the fact that kids all around me get to do it. And it's all with, all of, all of you guys that allow me to do this. So thank you so much.
All right, well, well said.
[applause]
Thank you guys for being here. And our third presentation of the night is a proclamation declaring this week, the week of May 15 through, sorry, not this week, next week, the week of May 15 through 21st, 2016, as National Public Works Week. And I believe to recognize, to accept this is our Public Works Director, Jay Walter. So as I mentioned before, we had a lot of opportunity to talk about public works and the vital role that it plays in our city over the past couple of weeks, whether it is our sewer system, our road system, our facilities throughout the, throughout the city. A lot of this work, people take for granted. It goes unseen, but when it breaks, you're definitely aware of it. And, you know, we've been doing a great job. I think we have an excellent Public Works Director who's been focusing us on making sure that we do preventative maintenance, so we're not having to deal with catastrophic issues, that we're taking care of our equipment and our facilities and upgrading as we go. So I appreciate all of your work and all of your team's work, Jay, and I think this is a great recognition for our city. And I'm going to present this proclamation, recognizing next week as National Public Works Week in the city of San Carlos. Good to see you.
[applause]
Well, I very much appreciate the proclamation and the accolades from council. Of course, it's not me, it's the staff that we've got. And they're the ones that are out there on the nighttimes, the weekends, the holidays, taking care of things, in the rainstorms and when bad things happen. And of course, our goal is ultimately not to have bad things happen, but they do, so we get in there and the guys fix them as quickly as they can. So I appreciate this on behalf of the Public Works Department and for the community. Just hope that we continue to serve well and we'll keep things flowing smoothly.
Thank you, Jay. Our last proclamation is to recognize a couple of members of our community for their commitment to sustainability over many years, David and Nancy Crabbe. And the suggestion to give out this proclamation came from one of our colleagues, Mark Olbert, and so I thought, Mark, it would be fitting if you were to give out the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for not tossing the mic over Ron. He might have been a little bit disturbing. Nancy and David, come on up. Not everybody may be familiar with Sustainable San Mateo, but it's an organization that's been around for many years. In fact, you two helped found it and get it off the ground. Well, you were in there, too. And, and it's very much focused on trying to teach and show people a different way of living, that you can live a very full and rich life in a sustainable way and not just be a pure consuming agent, I guess I would say. And over the years, Nancy and David have done many things to get the organization up off the ground. And for that, they won the Ruth Peterson Award. Ruth was an early member of the Sustainable San Mateo Organization and the award is given out in her memory. I would also like to say that in addition to all the work you've done in sustainability, both of you have been great members of our community in terms of a whole bunch of other things. I know, David, you're involved in, in the Sierra Club and hip housing and all sorts of affordable housing issues. And Nancy was a librarian for many years, which is a critical resource that often goes underappreciated. And I'll also say on a purely personal note, David designed my house, which I really, really like, so, and still do after living in it for a year and a half. So congratulations on behalf of the council and recognizing all of your service to the community and to Sustainable San Mateo, and thank you very much.
[applause]
Would you like to say a few words?
Okay, well, thank you for this award. And I want to thank the city of San Carlos for its continuing support for Sustainable San Mateo County over quite a few years. We appreciate that. Reporting our indicators report and our awards event. In fact, last year, San Carlos's own Devil's Canyon Brewing Company and the Salt Box Restaurant won a sustainability award last year from Sustainable San Mateo County. This is the 25th year of existence for Sustainable San Mateo County and the 20th year of the indicators report. And so we feel, feel good about that. And again, thank you for your support.
Just to add to that, it's, it's very gratifying to be in a, in a community. We've been in San Carlos for 27 years, so we feel like we're very much a part of the community and enjoy being a part of it. And having Sustainable San Mateo County supported by you is very valuable. I'm sorry we missed the Earth Day activities right here in San Carlos, but again, another recognition of the work that you do to support the kinds of things we, we support. Thank you.
[applause]
Congratulations. Congratulations again, very well deserved. And now we'll move on to item seven, public comment for items not on the agenda. This evening, I have one speaker card from our former mayor, Tom Davids. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening.
Well, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. It's my pleasure tonight to speak in behalf of the Chamber of Commerce as the Director
Congratulations again, very well deserved. And now we'll move on to Item 7, Public Comment for Items Not on the Agenda. This evening, I have one speaker card from our former mayor, Tom Davids. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening. Well, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. It's my pleasure tonight to speak in behalf of the Chamber of Commerce as the Director of the Chamber. Our chamber has launched a new initiative, we might call it, for the coming year in that we want to be more public and more outflowing in terms of what's happening at the chamber. And so we start with you all and let you know that we plan to come at every meeting and keep you posted as to what's happening. We'll be telling you about new business and new events and things that would interest you, and also hopefully this information will get into the community as well. So I'd like to start just by a brief review of what's happened during the last couple of months. In March, we worked with the mayor and hosted the State of the City address at Devil's Canyon Brewery, a tremendous event. I remember the old days when we used to meet at the Chinese restaurant in El Camino in a corner and did our mayor's address there, going back a long time. So we've come a long way getting to the Devil's Canyon Brewery. We had a government affairs meeting regarding the Adult Community Center, took a tour, ribbon cutting at Savannah Jazz. It's a new facility on Laurel. If you haven't been there, it's a lot of fun. They have a lot of great music and a good meeting place for the community as well. We had joint mixer with the San Mateo Chamber at Hiller Aviation Museum. We attended an open house regarding the Meridian 25 project. And most recently, we had our access meeting where we discuss larger items or principal items related to the business community. And this go-around, we talked about and got an update on Wheeler Plaza, the parking issues that will be resolved, and the schedule for the project. So that's another great event. We have a breakfast meeting, and it holds about 20—or about 50 people at the West Park Bistro, and urge you to drop by if it fits your schedule and be a part of that group as well. So upcoming events, on May 11, we have a mixer at the Home Chef Cooking School on Industrial Road. On May 18, we have a meetup, which would be a spring fashion show and new member special at the Domenico Winery. And on June 5, we'll start our farmer's market. And we have some beautiful, beautiful posters that would go up, two-sided, as you see. Put them in your window, put them in your garage, put them wherever you want them. But make sure you show up to our first event, which is June 5. It's going to be in the 700 block of Laurel Street, and it's going to be a year-round event. So we think this is going to be a real hit with town and with surrounding people as well. So we look forward to all of that activity, and I will put these with Crystal. She can pass them around, and we hope to see you—see you soon at our events. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. I have no other speaker cards tonight. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on general public comment? If not, we'll move on to approval of the consent calendar. Item 8, consent items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Is there anyone wishing to remove an item from the consent calendar? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Now we'll move on to Item 9, New Business. 9A, consideration of setting a public hearing for June 27, 2016 pursuant to Proposition 218 to consider a three-year increase in residential and commercial wastewater rates and introducing an ordinance amending Section 1308.160 of the municipal code. Mr. Walter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director, here tonight to cover this important topic for our community. And with me tonight, Alex Handlers from Bartle Wells &amp; Associates will be co-presenting with me. He's the expert that we've used to help us kind of analyze and determine the rates and the revenues that we need. Also in the audience tonight, you have Teresa Herrera, who's the Assistant General Manager at Silicon Valley Clean Water, and Matt Anderson, who's the CFO at Silicon Valley Clean Water. And so just in the event that there might be a question or two that come up as it relates to where our wastewater goes, those two folks are here. So tonight, we're going to go into a little bit of the background again as we start officially into the rate-setting season. We'll talk about sewer finances, the revenue requirements, and the expenses that we have in our wastewater program, and we'll talk about sewer rate recommendations, because the next step is for council tonight to give us direction on the rates that we would advertise out to our residents in the Proposition 218 process, so that we would be holding the Prop 218 hearing on June 23rd, I think it is? 27th, June 27th. I keep getting those dates mixed up. Anyway, that would be the time when notice would be given to all residents and businesses in town, and they would be able to come and talk more about the process and the rates that are proposed. So again, sewer utility overview for the city of San Carlos. Our population, about 29,000, with about 11,000 sewer accounts and mostly residential, as can be imagined. We operate the wastewater collection system, and then we convey it to the Silicon Valley Clean Water Treatment Plant for eventual disposal into the bay. And that occurs from our pump station location, which is on the other side of Highway 101, right near the hotel and Izzy's Restaurant that are there. We also convey wastewater from four county sewer districts through our system to be treated at Silicon Valley Clean Water as well. So again, we're in a position where our sewer utility is self-supporting. That is, the rates that we charge cover the costs for the sewer utility, for our expenses as well as the expenses we have at Silicon Valley Clean Water. And the—in the past, I think the council has been very clear that the rates that are set are ones that will provide us with the means by which we can support the projects and operational costs, both for our system as well as Silicon Valley Clean Water program. So at this time, I'll call Alex Handlers up to proceed with the presentation, and we'll have the opportunity for questions as we go.
Thank you. Nice to see everyone again. So I think Jay just kind of set that up. From my perspective, you guys have done a great job keeping your rates moving in the right direction, so I see really good financial stewardship there to keep the revenues in line with the projected costs. When we look at your rates, how they compare to other communities around San Mateo County, your rates are kind of in the upper-middle range, the way I'll call them right now. This is not a bad thing. It's a good thing, because you've already kind of done the heavy lifting with your rate increases over the past few years, and there are many other communities out there that are just now embarking on the need for significant rate increases, as they too need to address capital needs, particularly a lot of treatment plants in the area are 30 to 40 years old in need of replacement. When we look at the financial challenges, you guys are in good shape right now, but there are some significant costs coming down the pipeline, number one being the need to upgrade and rebuild the regional treatment plant and conveyance system that's operated by Silicon Valley Clean Water. They're in the midst of a multi-year program to totally rebuild the plant, meet new permitting and regulatory requirements, and serve the need of the community for the next 50 or so years, would be my guess. The total cost of that program's a little under $800 million. Luckily, your share's a small percentage of that, but it's still significant. You're a little over 15%. Works out to be about $120 million. They've already embarked on part of the program, about three-quarters left to go, and the way it's going to impact your sewer finances is through the debt service payments that you have to make. Good news is, Silicon Valley Clean Water is going after state revolving fund loans, which are subsidized low-cost funding source provided by the state, which will help keep your debt service down. But when we look at what's coming down the pipeline, you're currently paying about $1.5 million per year in debt service. By the end of this program, it's going to be over $6 million, so that's a significant hit to your finances. On top of that, you've got a lot of projects you've been dealing with and are going to need to deal with here within the city for your own collection system. You'll be finishing up your consent decree projects in the next year or so to minimize potential for sanitary sewer overflows, particularly during storms. And another big thing is a lot of the pipelines all throughout the Bay Area, sewer pipelines, water pipelines, were put in 40, 50, 60, 70 years ago, and you've got your share of them that are aging. They've been fine for a number of years, but a lot of them are approaching the end of their useful life. A lot of them are made of vitrified clay, kind of materials that aren't used anymore. So you haven't had to deal with a lot of this in the past. I know you've done some replacements of high-priority stuff, but coming down the pipeline is sort of like a tidal wave of pipeline needs, and the goal is to fund those on a pay-as-you-go basis without debt. We've built in $5 million per year for capital improvement needs going forward. And then, of course, every agency's dealing with cost inflation. You've got to keep your rates moving in the right direction just to stay afloat. This is a slide showing Silicon Valley Clean Water's capital program. Just want to make the point that they've gotten off the ground, but it's really the next four to five years that are going to be some substantial funding needs for rebuilding the treatment plant and conveyance system. And one of the important things is that all the member agencies have their rates adopted ahead of time to enable the financing to go forward and enable Silicon Valley Clean Water to get the low-cost financing. Going back, so what we do, we develop long-term financial projections to see where your rates need to go. I won't go into any detail about this, but really, the whole point is we try to build in the latest, greatest information, look long-term, and aim your rates gradually in the right direction. And from our projections, it looks like, again, you've done the heavy lifting with your rates going forward. It looked like you need 5% annual rate increases over the longer term to keep things—keep revenues in line with costs. So our recommendation is for three years of rate increases at 5%. And that's what it looks like graphically. Again, there's a lot of little things that are driving costs, inflation, things like that, but the big one is the kind of light green—well, let's see if we can—oh, I thought there was a beam here—but kind of a light green bar at the top, not the very highest one, but the next one down is the debt service for the Silicon Valley Clean Water Capital Program, currently $1.5 million, going up to $6.3 million over the next eight years or so. In terms of rate structure, as a quick refresh, you have a very common rate structure here in San Carlos. Residential customers pay a flat annual rate for sewer service. Going back a couple of years ago, we looked at some residential rate structure options, and what was done was implementing a slightly lower rate for multifamily residential dwelling units. Commercial industrial customers pay volumetric rates based on their actual metered water consumption and flow, subject to a minimum charge with higher rates for higher-strength wastewater. You collect your charges on the county tax roll. And again, with the rate structure, we kind of did a rate study a couple of years ago and reviewed the residential rates in 2014. Our recommendations at this stage of the game are maintain the existing rate structure. So here's what the rates look like with the across-the-board 5% rate increases for the next three years. I know it's a pile of numbers, but if people want to see what the details look like, here's what it looks like long-term, what's happened with the city's residential rates. You know, going back many years, there were no rate increases, then the city had kind of a catch-up period, and what's really been driving the rates over the last—recent history—is the need to get adequate revenues in place for rebuilding the treatment plant and the conveyance system, again, to meet new permitting requirements, regulatory needs, and it's just the treatment plant's, you know, roughly 35 or so years old and just at the end of its useful life. On top of this, a concern that's come up is, hey, you know, what can we do for folks who are on fixed incomes, low income? A couple of years ago, the city established a low-income discount program for its solid waste rates, 10% discount on garbage rates for folks who meet PG&E's Care Program Guidelines. That's a program offered by PG&E for low-income rate assistance. There's income qualifications, as well as if folks are on any kind of federal assistance or state assistance program, they automatically qualify. So what's being recommended is a similar program for your sewer rates, 10% discount for folks who meet the PG&E Care Program Guidelines. You bill customers on the property tax roll, so the tenants don't pay, it's the property owner that pays. So this would apply for single-family homeowners who pay the sewer bill. In terms of multifamily, they just got a rate decrease going back a couple of years ago, a couple of fiscal years. So you're trying to make sure everyone's paying their fair share, but giving a break to those who need it. One thing is, the discount cannot be subsidized by other ratepayers, so you can't raise everyone's rates to give some people a break under Prop 218. Unfortunately, you don't have a lot of extraneous sewer revenues from cell phone towers or property taxes, so this would require funding from the city's general fund. The city's contacted PG&E. It looks like there's, you know, between 600, 650 potential single-family homes who are eligible for the care program. The city's history with the garbage discount is that about half the customers actually apply for the discount. So if that was to take place, you're looking at a cost ranging from 35 to 40 million over —40,000, 35 to 40,000 over the next few years with a 50% participation rate. And as Jay mentioned, you're not taking action on rates tonight, but we do need direction for what rates are going to go on the Prop 218 notice. There's an error up here. Originally, we were targeting a June 13 council meeting date, but due to the timing, you have to get your Prop 218 notices out 40 days prior to the public hearing. So the public hearing would be on June 27, and if the rates are adopted at that time, you'll have the authority. You can always adopt the rates up to or below what's noticed in your Prop 218 notice, but the goal is to get the new rates onto the property tax roll starting next year. And that concludes what we wanted to cover, and we'll open it up for questions or comments.
Thank you. Questions for Jay and Alex? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Alex and Jay. When we met, the three of us, last week, I had raised the question about—basically boiled down to, if we were not to raise rates next year—or for the 16, 17 year—would we still be compliant with whatever our obligations are to Silicon Valley Clean Water, and would they still be—have the proper debt service coverage ratios or what have you? Were you able to research that question?
Yes. And you're in good shape now. Looks like with the rates you've got today, I think you'd be fine. However, there are a lot of projects that need to be funded in the next couple of years that Silicon Valley Clean Water is going out for funding for through the state revolving fund loan program. They do their own financial analysis, and they're looking now back to each of the member agencies to make sure that whatever rates you've adopted can secure whatever debt service that's going to come down from the projects they're applying for. So it looks like you're okay right now. However, you are going to need to adopt some rate increases over the next few years to make sure you've got the adequate financial security to keep the program rolling forward.
Does it—and I haven't decided what, if anything, I'm going to propose here, but if we were to adopt—if we were to take no action for this immediate next year, but —or to take an action where we had no rate increase for the first year and approved rate increase the second and third years, does the difference between those two? Because we can obviously have another hearing next year and make an adjustment for the 17, 18 year. Deciding it today for three years versus deciding it today for one year and next year for three years cause Silicon Valley Clean Water a problem?
Honestly, I don't think so, but, I mean, the coverage gets a little tight depending on how much they're going for. I've been informed that they're—in the process of working on an application, I think it was for $300 million, somewhere in that range, for the big conveyance force main. It's a huge project, and it requires a lot of financial capacity to pass muster with state revolving fund loan. So some things are a little bit unknown. They want to see that your coverage is in place to meet their requirements for a few years after the project's online. I think it would be okay. When I ran the numbers, but there wasn't a lot of room to spare. And you have a couple options. I don't want to say that—my general goal is, you know, the gradual rate increases. What would be preferable from my standpoint is if you wanted to do nothing the first year, was to still maybe go out with a Prop 218 and do a three-year approval, and maybe, you know, aim to catch up over the following two years, and you could reevaluate throughout. But I don't want to say anything's a slam dunk one way or the other.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, and I don't mean to put the person on the spot, but I understand we have the CFO from Silicon Valley Clean Water here, and perhaps he might wish to opine.
Sure, absolutely.
Or he may not wish to, but perhaps he's willing to.
So I— So I can echo what Alex has said, and that is that we are, you know, looking at a loan program right now with the State Revolving Fund. That money is cheap, is attractive, but the state does require that we come to them with an outlook of cash flows. To secure that loan, they need to confirm that. And we would actually be coming to you this summer with a request for resolutions to pass that very act for us to formally apply. I would say that it doesn't hinge under 3% in this year, but those loans will be coming online a year, two years from now. And at that point, we really would need to have some certainty.
Sorry, you apply for them like this year?
We begin the application process. That application process takes roughly nine months to a year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Bob?
Jay, you come to us with a three-year plan, but don't you come every year to reinforce that current year? Or to verify, or to have a 218? Is the 218 that we're going to do on June 27, it's not going to be a three-year 218, is it? Or is it?
It would technically be a three-year 218. Now, we did come to you in the intervening years after the last three-year rate increase because we made a couple of modifications to the rate structure. So that was the reason that we came back at that time.
Because I could see that we could set up, let's say, whatever we set, let's just say we went with what you put, 5, 5, and 5, and then next year, there's a, well, the year after, let's say, is a new council, and they go, we're not going to do that. But meanwhile, you already baked it, it's already been, you thought it was baked in all the way through. So if we approve, whatever we approve tonight, is this going to be solid and will go through the three years? Or will councils have a chance to change it?
What you're going to be approving with a, say, a three-year rate increase would be the maximum amount that it could rise within those three years. So a succeeding council could come in if they so chose, and they could revisit the rate increase for any particular year within that window.
But haven't you already baked in, or wouldn't you have baked in that increase already for what we're doing? And then if the council lowered it, we'd be in a jackpot?
It's, I guess it depends on how much they wanted to lower it. The other opportunity, too, is you could put out another 218 notice for a particular year following, because for some reason, you needed to raise the rates higher than the 5%. So council has great flexibility in this, but what we did is, we wanted to set this up for three years so that it's a, it gives the Silicon Valley Clean Water folks some, I guess, confidence that, yep, the city's committed to this, and that's the direction they're headed.
Well, that's, again, that's my point. I guess I'm not explaining it very well. We commit to a certain number. Matt puts it in, he bakes it in all the things. That's great. And two years from now, there's another council, and they go, no, 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 we're not going to raise it 5% this year. So now, aren't we in a jackpot? That's what I'm getting at.
It presents a potential problem that we'd have to deal with at the time.
Well, jeopardy or jackpot, whatever, yeah.
I think through the chair, isn't it in general, one council can't bind a future council?
Exactly. And what I'm getting at is, if we, you know, if we do a three-year thing, I'm just, I don't want to, I'm just concerned that if it gets baked into that, all the numbers, that we're going to be short, or it's going to be a difficult, it's going to be, it's going to be difficult for us to take care of it, or we're going to have to come out of general, I don't know where the money would come from if we have to come up with it. That's what I'm getting at, so.
Well, it needs to be paid by ratepayers within San Carlos. And just as a reminder, when we passed the three-year rate increase starting in 2013, there was an election that year, and we had change on council at that time, too. So there was, the council's activities can be revisited, but essentially, what we're, again, looking to do is try to create some stability as we go up.
I understand. One last question, and I'll shut up. But again, I'm getting at the point of, the third council, let's say, in two years says, we aren't going to raise it 5%. What are you going to do? What do you do then? And we, but it's already baked in. I mean, you've projected it, we're going to be short. What do we do?
We'd sit down with Silicon Valley Clean Water and find out how short we were going to be, and we would probably have to come back to the council and really make an impact complaint.
And if they say no, they say sorry, we don't care? Again, I'm not trying to look at the worst possible scenario.
As I understand it, the city's obligated, as a member of the JPA, the city's obligated to cover their share of certain percentage of the costs. So if for some reason the council, or a future council, didn't want to raise rates, whatever, up to whatever amount had been approved in the 218 process, then the city would simply be on the hook to come up with the money.
That's what I was just getting at. I mean, the city is going to be on the hook. If the ratepayers don't pay it, the city has to pay it. I just want to make sure that everybody--
The city's on the hook one way or another.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody understands what we're all doing up here. Sorry, thank you. Sorry it took so long.
Thanks, Ron.
Thanks, Cameron. Just one question I had. Mark brought up the thought of if we didn't raise rates next year, what happens to following years? And I noticed it's 5% each year. And if we didn't do that next year, do we end up with, what, 7.5% rate increases the following year? Or do we just keep it at the 5% and skip a year?
You know, if you continue with 5%, you'd always be a little bit behind. So typically, what agencies who go with no rate increase, they have a little steeper flight path to get caught up. So something like two years of 7.5%.
So there would be, potentially, a need for-- A steeper rate increase.
Yeah, to get you back to where you would have been all along. That's right.
That's what I was getting at. Thanks.
Thanks, Ron. Matt?
So I just have two questions. One, just to be clear, all we're doing tonight is approving, sending out notices with 5% because that's the maximum we forecast right now that we would do.
That's correct.
And so at the next meeting, or whenever the hearing is, I think you said--
27.
27th, that's when we would actually set the rates.
That's correct.
And we could be at 2%, 3%, 4%, as much as 5%.
As much as 5%. Yes.
Okay. This is the same fund that when we were going through budget hearings last Friday, that we were looking at that reserve amount of $4, $4.5 million at the fifth year, I think?
If I remember correctly, yes. We were in that range for most of those, the five years of the CIP.
Okay. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Matt. Could I, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Could we look at Slide 9? So my understanding of what's presented here is essentially that the capital improvement timeline, what's that? Okay, has, is not going as fast as was originally projected, and so the money is not being spent as quickly as was previously expected. And that's why you see the red line far exceeding the, or you see a dip down in the bar graph. Is that right?
I think what you're alluding to is you're, Silicon Valley Clean Water originally came out with a capital program in 2008, so about eight years ago. And initially, the plan was that the projects were going to come on a little faster, and the debt service was going to hit a little quicker. So it's come on a little bit slower, which has helped you keep some of the money for your own capital needs, but they're entering a very intensive phase of capital projects coming up soon. So they have come on a little bit slower, and this--
And what, can I just ask what the source of the slowness is? Or it being slower than was anticipated? And just really to try to get a flavor of how accurate do you think the predictions are, given that you're projecting here over the next nine years? Do you think that the factors that contributed to slowdown in the rate at which you were spending money are likely to be a one-time thing or a sort of long-term issue?
I would say the, thank you.
Sure.
The primary reason is when, is on our conveyance system spending, which is the big-dollar capital project that we have going. And we hit a, we hit a wall when we came out to the public with the plans that we had for changing our pipeline. So we hit a lot of resistance for good reason. We were talking about open-cutting major, major adverse impacts on people. So we stepped back and relooked at different ways that we might go forward with our project. And that took about a year or two to reevaluate. So that's the primary reason for the slowdown.
And so do you think you're going to meet similar resistance on other phases in the future, or?
We don't anticipate that. We've had quite a few public meetings, and everybody is really happy with where we are right now and the solution we came forward with because we listened to them. And the solution we have today is much less impact on people.
Okay. And so this one-year gap that we're seeing in this slide, that's essentially, we'd be accumulating more reserves that would be spent in future years without requiring a higher rate increase. Is that, is that the way to characterize it?
You know, maybe this slide's a little deceptive. So you look at 2015, 16, you're in deficit. Next year, it looks like you're in surplus.
Sure.
Part of that is because the city's budgeted for a number of capital projects for its own capacity assurance program in the current year. They're not all going to be spent this year. Some of those projects are going to be worked on next year, so the city didn't have as robust as an additional capital program starting next year.
Okay. Can we look briefly at Slide 5? So as I was looking through this, I was trying to circle who are the members of Silicon Valley Clean Water, and I think it's Redwood City, West Bay, Belmont, San Carlos. Is that, do I have that right?
That's correct.
So we, by a very narrow margin, we have the highest rates among the JPA members. Is that right?
Generally, and this is comparing, you know, flat rate, most of these agencies have flat rates, some do have a variable component. Belmont has a variable component. We assumed seven units, which is pretty normal. So you and Belmont are roughly neck and neck. They do need some additional rate increases, probably more than you do going forward. And the other one that's right on your tail is West Bay Sanitary District. They're, I think, anticipating a little bit higher rate increase than what you guys are looking at going forward as well.
So what's going on in Redwood City? I mean, why is Redwood City so significantly lower? And what were you going to say?
I was going to say, because I would--
Same size. More--
That's part of it. I mean, some agencies get a little benefit from economies of scale, and they're around 100,000 or so, about four times the size of San Carlos, so three to four times. And they've got a lot bigger commercial-industrial contributions to their sewer rates as well that help, help as well. So that might, that's probably a chunk of it.
Okay. My last question is on the low-income program. So if we wanted to move forward with that, what's the mechanism by which we take action to do that? Is that, I assume, is outside of the 218 process?
It is because it's not a rate increase. It's, what we would need from council is a commitment to provide up to $40,000 out of general fund revenues in the following year. And then it's, I think it goes up $3,000 to $4,000 per year with, if we go forward to 5% rate increases. And that's what we need a commitment of.
And so I don't see a resolution on that tonight. Is, are you just looking for direction? You bring that back for council action in the future? Is it included in the budget, or how, what's the mechanism?
We would include that resolution when we do the 218 hearing. So that would be something we would ask council to adopt the resolution as well as introduce the ordinance for the sewer rates.
Okay, got it.
And, Mr. Mayor, may I make a point of clarification? As council has started to talk about the idea of no rate increase in the first year and the possibility of 5% per year the following two years, if we went with a three-year rate increase, that doesn't put us significantly behind the curve in any way. We're able to, going forward from there, again, continuing to analyze what Silicon Valley Clean Water needs, and then programming rate increases from that point forward. So it isn't necessary tonight, in my opinion, that the council would have to adopt a 7.5% per year for the second and third year if we go with a three-year rate increase. So I believe we have Free Board to be able to work with if the council chose to go 0, 5, and 5.
Okay. Thanks, Jay. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, the comment I was going to make is somewhat similar to what Jay just said. Could you put Slide 9 back up, please? Thank you. The point I wanted to make apropos of the question you had asked, Mr. Mayor, in the course of my private sector career, I've made roughly thousands of those kinds of charts from budgets and financial analyses and whatnot. And with all due respect to the Silicon Valley Clean Water people, and I really mean that, basically, anything out even a year or two, you don't know what that is. Okay? You could put a band on it, but it's well outside the noise limit of what we're talking about. And that, in fact, is part of the argument behind not adopting multi-year rate increases because you always are, whenever you adopt a single-year rate increase, you're closer to the reality of what you're dealing with, and you have better visibility into that. It starts getting fuzzier as you further go out. And, you know, so to your point, Ron, you know, it may not actually require a bigger increase next year. But we'll come back to that when we actually talk about motions.
Thanks, Mark. Ron, you had another question?
And just one, can you remind me what the rate, what our rate increases were the last three years?
We had rate increases of 25, 20, and 10%. 25, 20, and 10%. Or 25, 15, and 10%, I believe. Yeah. That was the heavy lifting that Alex talked about as it relates to capacity assurance.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions for staff? I have two public comment cards. The first one is from Lorene Lederer. Good evening.
I'm here to speak about the rate structure that you currently have. Currently, you are charging a flat rate, a flat fee. Belmont is charging a fixed service fee with a variable rate based upon usage and benefit. The CA Constitution, which you have before you on the front, Article 13D, requires that proportional benefit be applied to fees. So this, so that small users are not supplementing or the benefits received by larger users. Belmont goes about this, and you'll see in the second group of papers before you, the comparison of what Belmont charges. For instance, a five-bedroom and three-bath home pays $500 more than a three-bedroom, two-bath home in Belmont. That's a significant difference than the $120, 10% discount you're offering to seniors. Your rates should not be based upon the ability of somebody to pay, but rather on their usage. A senior may use small amount, but also others living in a modest two-bedroom, one-bath home is not going to be washing the same amount of tubs, people, walls, everything that a six-bedroom, six-bath home will use. And they likewise should not be paying for those users and the benefit they receive from a well, a well-taken-care-of system. So my key point here is, I would like this council to delay action on this, and I would like you to review and implement a policy, a scheme, that involves a fixed rate for a service, flat-rate fee, with the addition of a fee relating to actual water usage from the household. I think this would be fair. I think this would be very considerate. I think also this would be complying to the law of the states of, the state of California. One thing I did notice in the presentation is that the projection of the cost of the Silicon Valley Clean Water, they're projecting is $790 million, I believe. When we were presented this 10 years ago, the projection was about, I think, 250, and then they adjusted it to 390. And then in 2012, they adjusted that to 460 million. Now, today, they're adjusting it to 790 million. This is significant. When you see the trajectory, and to the point that Mayor Johnson had noted, what is the trajectory and how can we rely on that? If it grows much more significant, it's going to be that much more of a huge burden on minimum users and on fixed people, fixed income folk. So I hope you delay, and I hope you give it a thought, and then implement a better plan next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorene. Our next speaker is Mary Farrell. Good evening.
I have three points that I want to make regarding this sewer rate increase. The first one is that I agree with Lorene's analysis completely, and I do feel that it is very unfair to submit, subject the people that live in San Carlos based on a fixed rate rather than a per-use-of-square-foot basis. There are some people that live in 1,500-square-foot houses. Some people now live in 7,500-square-foot houses. It simply is not fair, and it goes, again, to the point that a lot of the older people that live in San Carlos who are on fixed incomes are being driven out because they simply can't afford the taxes. My second point is that I agree totally with Councilman Mark Olbert on his analysis of the chart above. And I, too, have done many, many charts, and I do believe that his point is well-taken in that we can't really project anything more than three or four years out. The rest is noise, and it was a very good point. My third point is-- My third point is that it seems to me rather audacious of this public entity to request 5% this year, 5% another year, 5% another year, and then, we look at what they've already increased, which is almost 50%. And yes, we do need better infrastructure, we do need repairs, but let's get real, folks, this is just not a very good approach towards people that already live in an, in an area where they can't even afford to live it anymore. So, that's my point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrew Taylor. Good evening.
Council, well, I'll keep it short, I mean, when you think about it in, at least my logical terms, PG&E, you get a flat rate, and then, the higher your usage, the higher you pay, your water's your same, your trash is your same, so why are we not applying the same kind of logic and rate structure to sewage, which is also related to water you, I mean, at the end of the day, it's water usage that's driving it. So, it would seem, when you look at all these other services that are on some kind of, rather than a flat rate, you're, you're paying higher rates for higher usage, that it would be logical to apply the same kind of structure for sewage. Thanks.
Thank you. I have no other speaker cards, is there anyone else wishing to speak on public comment on this item? Seeing none, I see a couple lights on, what, gentlemen, do you have additional questions, or?
I do.
Okay. Ron?
Well, the, sort of, the, the theme of the comments was that we should, you know, the flat rate really isn't fair, we ought to base it on usage, and maybe we could have either Alex or Jay give, fill us in on that, and why, why don't we do that?
Sure, I mean, there was a lot of good comments made, and I appreciate when people come out paying attention to the rate structure, and I see it both sides, you know, equity's sort of a matter of perspective, some agencies with variable rates, people wish they were more flat, flat rates more variable, but it's a legitimate concern, I will say, I'm comfortable with it, the rates you have are fully compliant with the Constitution, we have a, we have a few slides, we threw in here as backup in case this issue came up, so, let me just pull those up. Yeah, the residential rate structure. Most of the costs of your wastewater system are fixed, both here in the city, and as well at Silicon Valley Clean Water, there's very little, unlike water service, or maybe something else that's water-based, very little of the costs vary with changes in water consumption. In fact, I just talked with an engineer a week or two ago, who said, with the drought, their flows have come down, it's actually increased their operating costs, because they need more chemicals to treat the higher levels of concentrations. So, it's not something that directly ties to water, the whole system was designed and built to serve, you know, different types of residential versus commercial users, the costs for those facilities don't change, whether someone's using a little bit of water or a lot of water, and we all know that with, unlike water, one of the weaknesses with sewer rates is that the, there's no direct measure of sewer flow. One woman had an idea, and you could do it based on square footage of a home, I'm not familiar with any agencies that have that, but there are, there's one agency, I think Sunnyvale has it, based on number of bedrooms. Most agencies in California have fixed sewer rates, reflecting that it's a fixed cost of service, doesn't mean it's the only way to do it, of the agencies that flow to Silicon Valley Clean Water, three of the four have fixed residential charges, it's only Belmont, and their rates not all variable, I think it's mostly fixed with a small part variable, so there's not a huge variation, or else, if you had variable rates, you could experience what, there are a few agencies that have variable rates, and they're finding themselves in financial straits, because due to the drought, water uses come way down, their, their sewer revenues are coming way down, so, there's no single right way to do it, what they've suggested are two other legitimate ways to do it, what you're doing is legitimate, when we looked at this a couple of years ago, I think the same things apply, you could have a small portion of your bill based on usage, it adds some administrative burden, maybe not the end of the world, it can be done, I don't know if it gets, necessarily gets you anything, and I don't know if it's any fair, considering that most of the costs, well over 95%, if not more, are fixed costs. So, when we look at this, we see there's, could you go that way? Sure, you can go a million different ways, but we didn't really see any compelling benefit to do that, and especially in light when we did look at this and have a reduced rate for multifamily dwelling units, as well as the potential for a low-income discount, but this is in the realm of policy, we saw minimal benefits, coupled with little to gain out of this, so, I'll just leave it there.
Well, I, I, that is, thank you, I mean, that's, I, I understand what, what you're saying, but if we were to go to that, and we were then rewarding the low users, older people, who, less people in home and all that, is there, is there sort of a, sort of a, you know, what happens at one end happens at the other, what happens to the rates of everybody else? Because you, we have fixed costs, right?
It's a zero-sum game, I forgot to mention that point, we had the other slide, you're exactly right, you've got to recover this amount of revenues, to the extent that some people are paying less, it means everyone else's rates will be a little bit higher. This is a slide here, I just wanted to throw up here, showing rate structures for many of the regional agencies in the area. At the top, the blue section, those are agencies that charge a uniform rate for all residential customers, regardless whether it's single-family, multifamily, et cetera, that's about a third of the agencies. At the bottom of the chart, the, we'll call alternative C when we looked into this, the yellow section, these agencies have a variable rate component, you guys are in the middle section, where you have kind of a standard rate for most single-family homes, and a little bit reduced rate for folks who are multifamily, just to show you where you stand.
Okay, thank you. Matt, did you have questions, or did you have?
No, I had a proposal.
Okay, and Mark, did you have other questions, or can we, can we just take Mark's question, and then we can go?
Which Alex answered in part, but since it was a legal question, I'm gonna turn to my favorite lawyer, Greg Rubens, and say, Greg, are we in compliance with state law with our current rate structure?
Yes, we are, because it substantially deals with the cost issue, and as stated by Alex, both the fixed costs and the maintenance non-fixed costs are accounted for in our program, and as you can see, we're in company of many cities on the slide that's up, statewide, so, we are in compliance.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, Matt, go ahead.
So, I'm glad this discussion came up about the, and that Lorene provided us with this material, because when I read what's in the staff report, that the variable rate option, it didn't appear that it gave us any option tonight to go in that direction, however, if we look at what is given us as options at the bottom of the report, it is to authorize, or do not authorize, and then threes, provide other directions to staff, and so, I would move that we do not authorize the city clerk to publish a notice for this year, and at the same time, ask them to bring us a report, a staff report, that would look at a variable rate option, and what that would look like, so that's my motion.
So, and I'll ask Greg this, it's my understanding, if, if we want to take no action, we don't need a motion, and we don't need a vote tonight, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, you wouldn't have to take any action, I think that's, the alternative is not take any actions, what Councilmember Groot caught saying, but you would have to agendize the study and everything else.
That's right, so we would need, we need a couple other councilmembers who would want to bring that back, so, reaction discussion?
So, you're, basically, your motion, you're not projecting, you're not gonna, you're not, you're, in other words, basically, be zero this year, you'd like a stu, well, we'd have to be a separate item to agendize, so you wouldn't even anticipate the second and third year, then? You're not putting anything in your motion for the second and third year, because you'd like to see what that study shows? Okay, I just want to make sure I understand.
And if, if I may, what I heard from your question is that if we did not raise rates this year, what Mr. Walter said was, it doesn't mean necessarily that the next year we'd have to go with 7.5 and 7.5, we could still stay at 5 and, and do just fine.
So, Matt, would it be okay with you if we took these two pieces separately?
How's that?
So, maybe, I mean, the first question that's on the table is a question about rates, and, and so, I think you're proposing that we, we do nothing, that we, we don't agendize a hearing, that we don't send out postcards, and that we come back next year.
Through the chair?
Yes.
May I, since, since in a sense, the first part of Matt's proposal is a non-motion?
Correct.
Do not take action, I am actually interested in making a motion, and I'd be willing to do that, and if, if that passes, then we have an action, we have an item to vote on.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's appropriate, we can talk about the, the variable rate as an agendized item next, do you have any objection?
No.
Okay, go.
If we have three people that want to do it.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, I moved to set a public hearing on June 27, 2016 pursuant to Proposition 218, to consider a three-year increase in residential and commercial wastewater rates with the adjustment to the staff report, that there would be no rate increase in 2016, 2017, and 5%, a maximum of 5% in the following two years.
So, we have a motion and a second discussion?
So, that would still allow us to, in the year that we're not considering any rate increases, to study if we, if, if we wanted, about doing a variable rate.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's my only concern, so.
Basically buys us a year, right?
Yeah, so the.
If we want.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, again, you know, I, if you look at this chart on 12, can we put 12 up, please? So, if you look at 96, 97 to 2005, 2006, coincidentally, the year I was elected to council, you have nine years.
Look what you brought us.
Exactly. Look, we have nine years, including four of yours, that you, we raised, we didn't do anything with the sewer rate. The next nine years, if you look at 969, that's, it crosses the, the line, so to speak, it gets us even. My, my whole thing with this is, I've always been a, a little at a time, you, you know, and I was, you know, brutalized when, unfortunately, and again, it wasn't staff's fault, but to raise these things, these, these obscene amounts, to get us back up to sort of even, where if we had just gone 3% a year all the way, or 4% a year all the way through, we would, including the first nine, and later on, we would have, we would have been right where we are, so, I'm not necessarily in favor of zero, but, oh, you know, I'm, I just think a little at a time, 3, 3, 3, or whatever it is, or, again, just because we set a, just because, as Matt said, we're not really setting the rate tonight, we're basically, we can't go above what, whatever the number is, and that's why I'd like to see at least something of the staff report, or a little less, so that we have that opportunity on June 27 to say, okay, we're not going to raise it above X, but if we, if the motion's zero, we can't raise it the first year. Again, I guess everybody understands that, but I'm just technicality, so, I'm not sure I'm going to support that one, but.
Mark, your lights on, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things, when I first started looking into this issue some months ago, frankly, my bias was more towards, well, gee, if we don't seem to be needing to increase revenues for next year, given the uncertainty of projecting things in following years, let's just do nothing, and we'll come back to it next year. But I was persuaded by my conversations with staff and with, with Alex, that that would essentially have a very high risk of putting us behind the eight ball in the out-years, particularly Silicon Valley Clean Water, because they look to, even though, as Bob pointed out earlier, we can come back and change the rates at any time, going through the 218 process, they look to what we have approved out over the next few years in their own budgetary process, and in their application for state funding, and I don't want to hamstring that, because, quite frankly, one of the things that, that people always seem to forget in San Carlos is, this sewage treatment plant was built a generation ago, essentially with federal money, it was a gift of federal funds, like 90%, something like that of it was paid for with federal money, and we didn't change, we didn't set the rates at a level to keep it operating in a long-term sense, we basically ran the thing into, into the ground, because somebody gave us a free gift. I'd really rather not do that again, so I, that's why I don't want to put Silicon Valley Clean Water at risk, I know what they have to do, I know the catch-up game they have to play, and to me, it sort of strikes a balance by saying, well, we really don't look like we need the cash next year, so let's not ask for more cash next year, but let's ask for more cash in the out-years, because we know we're going to need it. Secondly, the, the other thing I'd like to remind the council of, is we had a very similar situation last fall when it came to garbage rates, and the council decided, and I was on the opposite side of this particular issue, the council decided not to raise trash rates for the, the current fiscal year, or the current calendar year, 2016, even though we had a study which said, nah, the commercial rates are really out of whack with where they should be, and they're basically subsidizing the residential rates, but we did that because from an aggregate point of view, we didn't really need the extra cash to, to pay what we expected to be the bills for 2016. I would argue for those people who supported that last fall, that's another argument, this is the exact same situation, we don't need the cash for 2016, 17, so let's not ask for it, we have a really good idea that we're going to need it in 17, 18, and 18, 19, so let's ask for that, because, as Alex has said, a, a trajectory is the important thing, is to give some predictability to the people who are managing the finances for Silicon Valley Clean Water.
Thanks, Mark. Matt?
Yeah, a couple things, one, is that when we get to the evening where we'll actually talk about rates, I really want to focus on that $4.5 million, because that's, as I pointed out during the budget hearings, is twice what we've had before, and when we have that money in our reserves, it's not in the reserves of our citizens, and they have as much need with their retirement accounts, their own, you know, reserve accounts for their homes and so forth, to have that money in the bank and not sitting at City Hall. Number two, I'm fine, actually, with, you know, when I came in here and I saw the, you know, when I received the staff report and read it, and it talked about 5%, heck, I'd, I'd put out there 7.5%, 10% for a hearing, and I've said that before about other things, because I want people awake, I want them to get a notice that says, we're thinking about raising your sewer rates 10%, so that we fill up City Hall, or, or this auditorium here, with people who are saying, the heck you will, and then telling us why, and forcing us as elected officials to listen. And number three, regarding variable rates, I would really like to go that, at least research that direction, be ready to take action on that direction, and I was really disappointed to get a staff report that just says, oh, yeah, variable rates, but you shouldn't do it, and gives us nothing in the staff report about going that direction, or shows us that city staff is prepared to go that direction, because what I'm going to hear is, well, go ahead and set the hearing, and we'll set the rates, and we'll kick the can down the road on variable, and we'll think about it some other time, and I'm tired of thinking about it some other time, I wanted to hear about it tonight, and we're not, and we're not prepared to take action on that in any way, shape, or form, all we're told is, well, you know, there's a lot of fixed stuff and everything, I talked with this fellow after the last time we did this, and that's exactly what he told me, and I heard it, and I understand it, and I don't disagree with it, the points. Bob and I did the same thing when we dealt with Belmont and San Carlos Fire Department, we looked at the same things, you know, a lot of it's fixed, yet, you know, it's just the way it is, but, as these ra, as, as Lorene pointed out, as the rates increase and go up, and look, you know, 2006, rates were $360 a, a year, now we're talking about nearly three times that much, in just a few years down the road, so, yeah, people are going to want to economize if they can, and we need to give them that option, is my opinion, and that's why I'd like to look at the variable rates, but again, we're, I don't think, I don't know, maybe city manager can tell me otherwise, but I don't see that we're in the position to even go that route this year, or the next year, or the year after that.
Thanks, Matt. Bob?
Well, another perspective, is, you know, looking at what we have to do, we, as the city manager pointed out earlier, the money, we have to pay X dollars, if, if Silicon Valley Clean Water says it's X, we have to pay the X dollars. If you go to a variable system, and I don't know all the numbers, I haven't seen a system, but it certainly is, is dicier if you have a variable, I know in, in business, you have variable costs and fixed costs, if you know what your costs are going to be, you can extend out, and you know this is what the dollars are.
what the dollars are. If it's a variable, you're not going to know exactly what you're going to be getting. So, it puts the city at risk, the general fund at least, at risk of coming up possibly, depending on the situation, of coming up with extra dollars, that if it's a fixed situation, you don't have to come. I'm somewhat arguing rhetorically with you. I don't really, I'm not sure I believe either one of these things, but the point is, I know that the numbers, the more, the more information that Matt has when he goes to the state to say, this is what our, this is what our city, our group, our joint powers' folks are going to do, this is XXX and X, if they're variable, and again, one of the four is variable right now, if two are, okay, then he's got to adjust it at least a little bit to say, well, we think it's this, this, and this, but we're not absolutely sure because of the variable. I don't know that, I don't know that I want to go there, but that's, you know.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Putting in, it's just a different, a different perspective.
We're already told. Through the chair, we have a motion.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, what I'd like to do is vote on the motion we have, and then we can continue this discussion.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk about this. Any other comments on this motion? I'll just say, you know, my initial reaction was to be in Matt's camp, the way you initially stated it, which is, if we're not going to raise rates, you know, why should we be going out there, sending out postcards and holding hearings to say that we are, particularly given that we don't know what next year is going to look like until we're there. But I can, you know, I'm reasonably persuaded by Mark's argument, and, you know, I, as much as I want to hope that, you know, we're not going to need additional funding to support our sewer treatment system, I think that's the case. So, I'll be supporting the motion. Bob, did you want to make an additional comment?
Mark to repeat the motion, I'm sorry.
Okay.
May I synopsize it? Basically, it's, it's the language that staff had proposed with the adjustment that the first year has a 0% increase. So, there's no increase the first year, 5% years two and three.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
No.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Okay, so, let's move forward with the, closing out the discussion on Matt's request to bring back staff looking at changing our sewer rate system to a variable rate. Is there, is there anyone who wants to make further comment? Mark, did you?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to say that I have spent, since I joined the council five years ago, or four and a half years ago, I have spent quite a bit of time studying the fixed versus variable discussion about rates. And I am personally persuaded that particularly in our situation, that the fixed rate, I mean, no, no system is perfect, but the fixed rate system that we have, or the mixed rate system that we have, is suitable to our needs. It manages the risk that, as Bob has mentioned several times, about trying to make sure that we don't have to raid the general fund for shortfalls quite well. And I personally have no interest in having staff spend time studying the pluses and minuses of a variable rate system and bringing it back for discussion.
Thanks, Mark. Ron, did you want to make?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, you know, I, the problem with the variable rate, given all the information that we've seen, is that, you know, you end up with potentially unintended consequences. We could have an entirely different set of people in here who are paying an astronomically high rate to benefit a relatively small subset of people. Sewer rates or sewer capacity has to be, has to be maintained, sewer system has to be maintained. This is a public safety item. I have a strong sense of sympathy for anybody who has a difficult time paying the rates, but we have to figure out a system that keeps, that has some balance and that affords everybody the opportunity to be able to pay a reasonable rate. So, that's why I'm not going to be supporting it.
Thanks, Ron. Bob, did you have any comments?
As I guess it, I just, I just feel that you get much more predictability, especially with the situation that we have to have going, we're proposing to qualify for these funds that we have to get from the state. And I think it looks, quite honestly, if, to get these lower rates. And they're substantially lower interest rates at the state. I mean, we're like two points less, I believe, two points less. And, and, you know, when you start to do hundreds of million dollars of two points, that's a lot of money. And so, I just think it's a, and I agree with my fellow colleagues, that I think we should just keep the fixed system.
And I will say that, that, number one, we were told that fixed costs are about 90 to 95%. So, that would, that would lead me to believe that if we were brought back something that showed us a variable rate, you'd be looking at fixed with a variable on top of it, which is going to be very little difference. And so, what that would show to Matt and the others is, is something with very little variable. And so, it would be something that he and the others could trust. I think it would have great reliability. Number two, the assumption that's being made is that the variable rate, from what I'm hearing from the dais and the comments, is that it would be based on water, water usage. And it doesn't have to be. When we changed from giving multifamily a different rate, different fixed rate, it was based on the fact that you've got a lot of one-bedroom apartments with one bathroom, one user. And so, how's that any different than looking at, okay, if you have a house of a certain square footage, or, or the other thing you could look at is, how many bathrooms are in the house? You know, in my business, I do a lot of work where I take a little house that's two-bedroom, one bath, and the people are planning on growing their family, which is great, I love that. And that's why they want to have a house that's got three or four bedrooms and maybe two and a half baths, because there's going to be more people in the house using it. So, why shouldn't those people also, after they've done their, you know, $600,000 home remodel and changed from a little, you know, house to a bigger house, why shouldn't they also pay more for their sewer than their neighbor who didn't do a remodel and is sitting there with a two-bedroom house and one bath, and it's just, you know, a husband and wife or whatever, and they don't have any kids and, you know, and they don't plan on it. Or maybe they're close to retirement, so nothing's going to change for them. Yet, next door to them is somebody that's got, you know, you know, a couple with four kids, and they're using more sewer, taking more use of the sewer. And yet, even with that, you know, probably their variable is, you know, maybe 10% difference. So, you're asking somebody to pay 10% less than somebody else who's probably using it more to pay 10% more. That, that to me seems fair, and I, all I'm asking is, not that we would make a decision on it tonight, but we have never, on this dais, seen a report that shows us. And that's all I'm asking for, is let's look at it, let's look at the option, not necessarily take action on it, but doggone it, why can't we look at the option? We're elected officials, we make decisions. You can't make a decision if you haven't been given the option. So, that's all I'm asking for.
Okay. Given that we don't have three council members, do you want to keep debating the point, or do you want to move on?
I, I just want to make a very brief comment, and I will, I will authorize you to cut me off whenever you feel appropriate.
I don't have the power to turn your mic off.
But you have, you have the power to, you can hit Ron and he'll hit me. The, the point I wanted to make that may help my colleagues a little bit, or colleagues who are concerned about this a little bit, what we're really talking about here is a pricing model. And in fact, there's an infinite number of pricing models that one could take for pricing a service. Prices have nothing to do with costs. Basic economics says that they only tie in together, you know, due to competitive forces. We're a public agency. We're, we operate in a different set, a different environment without that. And as a result, really what this comes down to is, in my mind, the best argument is predictability. If we adopt any kind of variable rate structure, then inherently, what is at risk is our general fund. Because, as you heard the discussion earlier that Bob was leading, that's where the, we have to pay the bill, because we have obligations to Silicon Valley Clean Water. If we don't raise enough money, it has to come out of the general fund. And I'm just interested in trying to minimize the amount of risk that we face to the general fund, because the general fund is not the most robust thing in the world, in San Carlos. Last point I'll make is, I understand Matt's desire to want to hear stuff. I will say that as an elected official, I have, you know, spent a lot of time studying this issue. I don't ask anybody else to take my word for it, but I assume that that's what my colleagues do. If they're interested in something, they study it. I told you what the conclusions on my side were, that I didn't see the value in wasting staff time on this, because quite frankly, there's an infinite number of topics we could have staff work on. It's a value trade-off about where we think the biggest bang for the buck is. It, this one doesn't meet my needs.
Thanks, Mark. Ron, is it, is it burning on this particular topic?
Just a final comment. I don't think that staff has a horse in this race. This, variable rates have been studied, studied a lot. If they were appropriate for us and they worked for our city, I think they'd be recommended for the city. It's not a question of, you know, one is better than the other to staff, or that there is going to be some great advantage to them. I personally would probably benefit from a variable rate. So, I'm sort of voting against myself. There's only two people in my house, three temporarily, but soon to be back to two. But our job is to look at the good of the entire city, everyone who lives here, 29,000 people. And that's how we have to make our decisions. And variable rates have been studied over and over again. We've had presentations on them. It's not like it's a new concept. So, if there is, if, if there's not an overwhelming push or a reason to do it, I'm not sure that it makes a lot of sense at this point. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Ron. So, I'll just briefly sort of state my position on this, given there's been a lot of discussion. I, to me, this is not really an issue about the sewer, it's an issue about economic equality, fairness, and, you know, that rising cost of living, which I do think is a serious issue on the peninsula. We've taken a number of steps on the city council in recent years to have some impact on that. I think the, creating the subsidy program is a positive thing to do, and we ought to move forward with that, and I want to talk about that in a second. We took the recent action of reducing rates among renters and multi-unit buildings. I also think that's a good step. However, I'm reasonably persuaded that this isn't a very complicated vehicle to try to redress kind of cost of living issues within the city of San Carlos, and that I'm also reasonably persuaded that there isn't a huge variable component to that, meaning that if you flush the toilet more times, it doesn't cost the system more. It's essentially a shared resource in which we all pay into. So, I'm, I'm certainly open, if somebody wants to make a persuasive case, that, you know, there would be a significant change in the, what's that?
I don't know if she wants to speak on this.
Okay, all right. I lost my train of thought, but I, the, if, if, what I think we should do, we shouldn't raise rates this year. I think we should move forward with the subsidy program, and I think we should see how that goes. And we can always talk about it more in the future.
Just to be clear, since it's technically an item to be agendized, I am a second voice that would like to see this.
So, that was, I was going to ask, if there's a third, a third voice who wants to move forward with the, seeing that on the agenda? No? Matt?
Sure.
Okay. All right. We will agendize that with our 218 hearing in June. Is that right?
Sorry, what did we just do?
The, the program that staff discussed about having a 10% subsidy for people who qualify for PG&E care.
Sorry.
Okay, okay.
I want to make sure I heard.
Great. Okay. And since I'm feeling in a charitable mood and we have a, a light agenda tonight, I'll entertain one more public comment on this item, and then we will move on. But I cannot read the writing.
Yeah.
Oh, come on, huh?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
It really is very simple. It's a pure formula. It's mathematical formula. It's very easy to do, just like you, it's much more expensive to build a small house than the large house per square foot. Okay, you know how much money you need, and maybe it would be good to look at the model that Belmont is doing. If you had a flat rate of so much for each house, and then the difference is that you, money, the monies that you need is drawn per square foot, that, that kind of makes sense to me. If you have a 5,000-square-foot house and you have a 2,000-square-foot house, you would, on those 3,000, proportionally charge for, for the sewer rate. I, I just don't know how this can be complicated. It's just very simple. It's just a formula. I, I mean, I probably can go out there and do it on a, on a paper napkin. I mean, I, I just don't really see, how is this a problem? Not to see that people that live in a 1,500-square-foot house or a 1,000-square-foot apartment should be paying the same as somebody that lives in a 7,000-square-foot house. And we should look at the different model, like you guys were just mentioning a minute ago. Look at other cities that are doing it that way. And actually, you will actually make more money that way, because more and more houses are building bigger, are being built in this city. You're actually going to draw in more money that way, if it's, if it, if it is per square footage, because you're not building small houses anymore, you're just building big houses. So, actually, that variable will be in our advantage. Thank you for lighting.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we will move on to item 9B, consideration of introducing an ordinance mandating Chapter 13.04.025 of the municipal code relating to fees for sewer connection. Mr. Walter.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director, and here, here for the second item as it relates to our, our city sewer system. And my time just ran out, so I hope I can continue.
Please do.
This one, this one is different in that this one is related to the connection fees, or as we now call them, the capacity charges that we would be levying against new connections to the sewer system. So, what we're trying to accomplish, and Alex will help me with the presentation here in a second, is it's essentially to help us recover costs for the capacity and infrastructure and assets that are going to benefit that new development. And we would be collecting it from new development. This is not a charge that would go against anybody's existing sewer connection, because those, those are already essentially grandfathered in. We used to call it a connection fee, and essentially, it's something now that we're calling a capacity charge. We have some growth that's expected with redevelopment within the city, and there's an opportunity for us to be able to take advantage of that new development, sort of paying its share of the, the capacity of our sewer system. So, I'll go ahead and bring Alex up to walk through the presentation, and then we'll be available for questions. And Grace Lee is here as well. She's our city engineer, and Grace is the one that's been dealing with a lot of the new development, redevelopment things now, too. So, if it's a question that evades both of us, then we'll ask Grace.
Okay, thank you again. So, this slide shows your current charges, just to let you know where you're at. You, when a new single-family home connects to your wastewater system or a multifamily unit, there's a charge of $4,500 per residential dwelling unit and a commensurate charge on the commercial side for buying in for their share of assets and infrastructure. Two key points about that, one is your charge hasn't been updated since 1990, so it's over 25 years old, surprise. That's not uncommon. We work with a lot of agencies that haven't updated their connection fees in many, many years. It's not uncommon. The other thing is, kind of unique to you, your charge includes not only the buy-in for the city's infrastructure, but also for Silicon Valley Clean Water's connection fee. And their fee is about $2,100 per single-family home currently. And really, going forward, you need to separate those fees out, because if you look at historically what's happened on this chart, going back in the far left, 1990, your charge was the blue section. It was over $4,000 per dwelling unit that you were recovering. Silicon Valley Water collected a little bit. The way your charge is set up, you're essentially left with the leftovers after Silicon Valley Clean Water charges their fee. So, as they've changed their fee and increased it over the years, you've been left with a dwindling amount to where we are today, where the fee's been since December 2012. You're getting about $2,400 per home, far less than the 4,000 that you used to get. Putting it in historical perspective on this slide, your charge that you collect is the blue line here. Used to get over 4,000 as Silicon Valley Clean Water has ratcheted or changed its fee, your fees changed accordingly to today, where you're at the $2,300 level. For comparison, we added a red line on here. For comparison, we added a red line on here showing what if you had adjusted your charge that you were collecting by the change in the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index, which is a widely-used measure of construction cost inflation. So that would be the, considered the level of keeping things adjusted for inflation compared to where they used to be. And you could see if you had just adjusted your charge since 1990, it would be about $8,900 per home, so substantially higher than where it currently is. So that means you're missing out on a lot of revenues from growth. What we did was updated the fee based on a pretty standard system buy-in approach, where we include the value of existing infrastructure, as well as for new infrastructure that's adding capacity or, you know, furthering the facilities that you have. We did not include any cost recovery for repairs and replacements. No recovery for repairs and replacements to make sure we're not double-counting existing infrastructure, as well as the replacement of that infrastructure. And that's an issue that comes up over and over again with the Building Industry Association, who doesn't want to see that. We divide all the recoverable costs by the capacity of the system through buildout. Pretty straightforward. We come up with a charge per unit, a little less than $57 per gallon per day of sewer discharge. We then apply that charge by the standard usage patterns of different types of residential dwelling units. You have an engineering study that was conducted a few years ago, the master plan, that indicates single-family homes are, the design standard's 190 gallons per day. So that unit charge times 190 gallons per day equals a charge of about 10,800 per single-family home. The design standard for multifamilies, 120 gallons per day, which translates to a charge of about 6,800. And non-residential would pay a commensurate fee based on that $56.90 per gallon per day. There's a minimum charge for the first 100 gallons of use, and anything above that, they'd pay the additional $56.90. And this is for your city fee alone. The whole point of this was also to separate your fee from Silicon Valley Clean Water's fee, to make sure here in San Carlos, you're collecting the full amount from new development so that growth is paying its own way. Here is a chart showing what a lot of agencies around the Bay Area and your area are charging. You can see currently on the left, there's your fee in the blue with Silicon Valley Clean Waters in the green totaling 4,500. With a proposed fee, you'd be, again, a higher range compared to some of the other agencies out there, lower than others. But I'll point out, there's a lot of agencies out here that are in the same boat as you that simply haven't touched their fee in many, many years and are long overdue for a fee increase. Some other fee recommendations. A lot of your growth here in the city is not going to be developing vacant land, because there's not a lot. It's going to be redevelopment. So when a property redevelops, the property owner or developer would only have to pay for the incremental increase in demand generated by their project. So their existing capacity is grandfathered in. And the second thing is, we want to make sure that when you're, under the joint powers agreement, joint powers of authority agreement you have with Silicon Valley Clean Water, the city is obligated to implement and charge Silicon Valley Clean Water's fee, but we want to make sure that's completely separate from your fee, that you're really only collecting that as an administrative pass-through. And that you start levying your fee for Silicon Valley Clean Water based on the same engineering design standards that you're using for your own fee that come out of your master plan. In the future, just so you know, the fees cannot exceed the estimated cost that we've calculated according to government code. You could always opt to implement something lower if you wanted to, or to phase into the charges we've collected, but you cannot exceed the charges we've calculated. In the future, we recommend not going 25 years before the next fee update. And typically, what we recommend agencies do, and is reflected in your ordinance, is an annual fee adjustment that would be based on the change in the Engineering Record Construction Cost Index, so that your fee can stay in line with construction cost inflation. And that pretty much sums it up right there. This is an ordinance for your consideration tonight, so this is something you would be taking action on. Ordinance couldn't go into effect until at least 30 days after being adopted, but the decision's up to yours as to what fee you want and how quickly you want to get there.
Thank you, Alex. Questions for Alex and Jay? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Alex. Jay, actually, this question may actually also involve Rebecca. Because basically, what I'm curious about is, do we have, do we have any insight into, it's going to sound overly critical, how it was that we ended up in a situation where a fee that we had set years ago was basically being eroded away, because it was being diverted more and more, I shouldn't say eroded, it's being diverted more and more to a legitimate use, which is Silicon Valley Clean Water. And nobody came back to say, hey, the bucket's getting empty. And that may be an unanswerable question, given staff turnover, but I still want to ask it.
I think it's an unanswerable question at this point in time. I honestly do not know. This isn't something that has come up, except that recently with Silicon Valley Clean Water and our discussions with them, they've zeroed in on the way that they want to have their capacity charge calculated and then passed through to us. So I think it essentially focused the attention on that issue here, and what we didn't want is a further erosion of the amount that we had, and we realized it hadn't changed in a long time.
Silicon Valley Clean Water, in a sense, triggered the review of, hey, we need to look at ours.
That's correct.
Question, though, for Rebecca. Are there any other fees like this that we share with some other agency that we haven't reviewed in a long time?
Off the top of my head, I can't think of any.
Okay. If you find any, please don't hesitate to come.
Obviously, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Matt?
You had a graph up there, or a chart up there where you showed by additional gallons.
Was it something like this?
No, it was where, it was a chart that you, that one, right there.
The fee, yeah.
Yeah. So I see, that's non-residential, but how do you, so how do you calculate this additional gallon per day? How does that get calculated?
Yeah, you know, with the non-residential side, it's all different types of development that's coming out there, whether it's a restaurant, or a school, or an office. So there's a calculation that gets done, working with your engineering staff, to come up with an estimate of how much sewer flow is coming from a new development, and that's what the charge would be applied against.
Yeah, and to further explain that, in our wastewater master plan, our sewer master plan, we project our wastewater needs or wastewater flow projection. And in that, depending on the category, if it's commercial, it's by square footage, it's a certain gallons per day per square footage. If it's a hotel, it's per room, it's certain. So there is industrial standard on how to calculate these. And we have it all charted out in our sewer master plan that's been adopted. So this rate would, is compatible with the sewer master plan, does reference that. So we'd go back to our sewer master plan, and according to those structures, whether it be by square footage for commercial or by room for hotel, we'd calculate their gallons per day, wastewater generation.
And included in all of this is not just pipes in the ground, but sewer plant, the whole, from start to finish, for sewage treatment?
Or wastewater treatment, so.
What you're doing here.
Right, so when Alex says about the asset, that's all covered. It's for our sewer transmission system, because we don't, we don't do the treatment portion of it. So our capital would be the capital cost we put into our sewer system, our collection system.
Why doesn't it include the treatment? Because eventually, you get down the road, and, you know, we're sitting here bonding and paying for a sewer treatment plant and raising rates five, well, for a while, 10%, 15% to pay for a bond, to pay for the improvement of a treatment plant. And you're saying, okay, we're going to increase capacity, we're going to, you know, by the further development, right? The idea here is to capture not what's there and running now, but to say to a developer, you're loading up our system beyond its capacity, so we have to increase capacity, so therefore, and our existing repairs shouldn't have to pay for that. They're already paying for the capacity that exists. We're asking you to pay for increased capacity. Doesn't that go to the SOAR plan as well?
Yes, they have a separate fee that Silicon Valley Clean Water calculates, and the plan is to change the basis of that fee to make sure it captures everything, not only the existing facilities, but also if there's been debt service payments and things made into the Silicon Valley that are benefiting the future customers, that there would be kind of reimbursement that's included in that fee.
That's why you're stripping us separate, so that we can capture what we need for our transmission lines.
Exactly, and so we don't have the situation where you have the two fees embedded, where your fee gets changed over time.
I get that, right, okay.
Thanks, Matt. Ron?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm a little confused by the fact that these fees, for what, 22 years, didn't change. But this was Silicon Valley's choice not to change them, is that correct?
No, no, no.
They just, the rate was the same, right?
The fee, the city has, let's see if we can find that slide. The, am I going the wrong way, Alex?
Yeah, there it is. Go back to, was it number four?
The next one, there, that one.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
Right, so the blue represents the piece that the city of San Carlos was, was keeping from the capacity fee that was being charged, the connection fee, essentially. And the orange piece is the piece that Silicon Valley Clean Water was asking us to pay, essentially demanding us to pay. And so you can see the variability that their amount has gone through over time. And so since the city never went back through and came to council and said, hey, we need to increase this so we can at least keep a minimum amount for ourselves, it was all just, say, taken out of the 4,500 that was set for the city a long time ago. So again, Silicon Valley Clean Water has gone through their process, and again, they're looking at a way to have a reliable connection fee going into the future. So we felt it's time to go back to council and talk to them about this, because we don't end up with our share of this if we continue to see a smaller piece of it as Silicon Valley Clean Water's fee rises.
I guess I'm still confused, because I see a total fee in 1990 of $4,500.
The city set it.
Huh?
The city set that fee.
We set that.
We set that fee.
We set the fee.
And in 2007, it was still $4,500. And 2012, it was $4,500.
And today, it's $4,500.
Isn't there, there was no inflation built in?
Nope. Nope, the city didn't do anything.
And it was because we couldn't do anything.
We didn't do anything.
We chose not to.
We chose not to.
Well, however, the, I don't know, it's not that, I can't say that it wasn't that we didn't choose, or we didn't want to, or we didn't initiate it. We didn't. We did not change it.
Okay.
If only you had known, Ron, you could have run on this. You know, Bob and Matt had done nothing all these years.
My campaign thing.
Okay.
So a question. So if I, what would a hotel, where would, under the proposed city charges, where would a hotel fit in? Which one of these, residential or non-residential, multifamily, what is it?
Non-residential.
Non-residential. So Joe Smith comes in and wants to build a 204-unit hotel, so he's going to pay $1,190 more, is that right? Okay, $1,190 more times 204, okay. He's going to pay about $250,000 more if he doesn't have a, doesn't have a building permit. And then what about the additional gallon? That's an estimated amount, right? So he's going to pay actually a little more than that, because he's going to pay $56. I can't estimate that, no.
I did estimate that.
Oh, here you go. Thank you so much.
For non-residential, because of the current rate per gallons per day is so low, that the new rate, once we adopt the new rate, they're going to be paying four times as much, roughly.
So they'll pay, in other words, right now, it's, beg your pardon, right now, it's, what is it now? They don't have it, there's nothing now?
No, there's something. It's based on, so it's 4,000.
270 gallons per day, but we're looking at.
Yeah, $4,500 divided by 270 gallons per day. So that's why their gallons per day is so low.
Oh, I see, okay.
That if we increased the amount across the board, the non-residential is going to take a bigger.
So I see what you're saying. It's 1667 right now, and it's going to go to 5690.
So it's going to be four times as much.
Right. Plus, but it's going to be per each additional one gallon of discharge.
Per gallons.
So for usage, it's going to be four times, times something. Okay, all right. So it's going to be substantial amount of money if someone came in with a hotel. With a, with the condominium, where would that fall, multifamily or single-family?
So condominiums or multifamily.
Multifamily.
And they'll be, their cost would be roughly 1.7 times as much.
So they're going to add, well, just to do the simple math, $2,300, 23, 28, okay, if you're building 100 units, it'd be about $232,000, just right off the top. Okay.
Currently, they've, currently, they pay a little more, because we use, currently, it's like single-family, multifamily, it's all 4,500. So that's why, yeah.
Yeah, so it wouldn't go up as much, the single-family ones basically are the highest. Okay, thank you.
Well, non-residential's the highest.
So, question from me. Under fiscal implications, it says, you know, basically says depends on how much development there is, but can you give us sort of a ballpark? Do you have any revenue estimates? How many of these do we do a year? Are we talking tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars?
That's tough to say, because I've been told that since I came to San Carlos, development has spiked up immensely. So if we used last year protection, it barely makes any dent. But this year, I've got a list of developments that are coming through the door. So it would make a huge difference, especially since non-residential is four times as much for each non-residential. I didn't, I didn't sum up the amount, but it is quite substantial. And it looks like that we're, we're going to continue to see more development.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't hear, is there any order of magnitude of number that you're thinking of? I mean, just, I'm just curious.
I don't have a sample.
Okay, it's not crucial. I mean, I'd just be curious in the future. And then I hesitate to ask this question, given the previous discussion, but I do think it's worth asking, which is, you know, we just went through a long discussion about how using capacity flow is not necessarily a good way to set sewer rates for, you know, residential usage. And yet, kind of the calculations that undergird the connection fees are based on how much wastewater flows through them. Is that a contradiction?
No, because this is very commensurate with what's done with your rates, where you have, whoops, there would be fixed charge per residential dwelling unit based on the capacity standards, very similar to your rates. Single-family home and multifamily home would pay the same fixed fee per dwelling unit. But on the commercial side, there's really no other way around doing it, whether it's based on square footage or estimated flow based on square footage. And that's the way you're, you have commercial sewer rates that are at the same line with that, where there's a variable charge, subject to a minimum.
Okay.
Yeah, good question.
Okay. Mark, you had an additional question?
Yes, I did, thank you. It was sparked by a question you had asked, Mr. Mayor. These fees, when they're collected for development or redevelopment, are they sequestered into a separate part of the sewer fund? Because in a sense, they're, what I was imagining is, as redevelopment takes place, money gets accumulated by fees being paid, and it's really only every once in a long while that Jay comes back to us and says, hey, we need to put another parallel line into that main, force main, because we need more capacity. And that's when that money really gets used, or that's, that's the notional target of that money, is to actually build some additional capacity.
Yeah, I mean, there's different, different ways fees are calculated. Sometime, an agency has got, you know, a ton of capital projects, and that's what the fee's based on, so they're using the money to help build the new projects. In your case, you've already built most of your sewer system. You've oversized it and built it in advance to be able to handle growth. So as growth occurs, a lot of that money represents a reimbursement that's coming back into the sewer system that then can be used for things like repairs and replacements, because you're really not doing a lot of expansion with your sewer system. So they have to pay back in for the expansion capacity that's already been built. But there, you are supposed to be keeping those funds, at least accounting for them separately than traditional sewer rate revenues.
And we do that? I'm not sure if this is Jay or Rebecca's question. You give Jay a separate checkbook?
So the sewer fund is a separate fund of the city, and the revenues that are accumulated can only be used toward.
can only be used towards sewer. So this includes the capacity charges as well.
But we don't, so we co-mingle the capacity charges with all the other charges that are collected.
Right. All the sewer revenues go into the fund and into the fund balance.
I will probably talk to you and Jay about this offline because I just want to make sure I understand it a little bit better. I'm not, I think I get that, particularly your point about paying back for stuff that's already been built. But it gets a little hinky in my head, not your idea. Sorry.
Thanks, Mark. Matt?
Yeah, just, I have a question, but a quick comment to what Mark's asking about is I suppose potentially if there was a lot of development, a lot of money came in, these forecasts that you have out there on our rate changes at 5% or 3%, maybe they get reduced to 2 because we've had a lot of development. And like you said, we're really, we've already built over capacity. And so maybe we don't need to use that money to increase capacity, but we could use it for other things to help keep our rates down.
Essentially, it adds to the revenues in the sewer fund. So you are correct in that regard.
Okay. Just one more hit at this thing that's up there now with residential versus non-residential. I'm going to guess that's because, the reason you're doing flat rate on single-family and multifamily, but when you get to non-residential, you're looking at gallons of use is because, for instance, if you're, you could have a huge warehouse, for instance, with a lot of square footage, but it's a bakery. And you know bakeries use so much water to do what they do and produce so much sewage in doing it. You know, they could have, like I say, they could have a huge warehouse, a lot of square footage, but the actual operation itself, you can't base that on square footage. So you're actually looking at the use. I know the code, the building code does that in other ways, like with exiting requirements and so, you know, capacity of building based on, is it office? Is it, so am I on to the right thing there? Is that kind of what you're doing?
That's exactly right. So the category use, like you said, restaurant is very different from warehouse. So that would, depending on what the use is, depending on what category it falls under, it would be a different estimate for their wastewater generation.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Any further questions? Is there any public comment on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, but I'd also like to say I think I missed making the motion to move, to introduce the ordinance on the prior item. I only did the first part of move to set a public hearing.
There's no ordinance on the first item. I think just the instruction.
Oh, okay.
Additional step there.
In that case, I move to introduce ordinance number.
1504.
1504. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos amending Chapter 13.04.025 of the Municipal Code, Fees for Sewer Connection.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Bob?
Through the chair. The single-family, there's not, I'm assuming all the remodels, it doesn't count because it's already got a connection fee, right? Okay. So new homes, single-family homes here, nobody's going to be building a 300 single-family home tract in San Carlos. It's not going to happen. So that one doesn't bother me so much. The multifamily one, we're going from 4,500, correct me if I'm saying something wrong here, please, $4,500 to $6,800.
$6,800 plus Silicon Valley Clean Water's fees.
I understand. So it's 8,300, ballpark. Ballpark. So we're going from 4,500 to 8,300. That's a 75% increase. And for someone who's building a multifamily, I'm not doing, let's rephrase that, for anyone who would be building that, that's a substantial amount of money if they're in pipeline or whatever and their timing is poor and they haven't pulled their building permit out, that's 75% higher. I don't know that that's, we didn't, for whatever, the majority of we didn't change it, but now it's, and again, it's all timing. We're going to have a lot of development, a lot of, besides the landmark hotel, we're going to have, there's been an application, which I think we passed in consent for an EIR for 164 units possible being built on Britain. And there's other ones in town, apparently in the pipeline somewhere. I just don't know that, to me, I think that's just a little too high on that for me. I don't think I can support the, and I know the motion's inclusive and I don't mean to split the baby, but.
You're welcome to offer an amendment if you choose.
Yeah. I haven't really thought of the, I just, I just think that 75% is too high, so I'm going to do, if I do 45, 70, 83, let's split the difference, 800, 26, I'd say split the difference so instead of, so we've got 1,900, so it'd be 6,400, I guess, 6,400 for the total instead of 83, which would take away the 1503, which would be 97, I make it easy math for myself, 5,000. 5,000 for the multifamily instead of 6,828.
Through the chair. Before, just as additional input for people possibly responding to the revised motion. I have had a number of conversations with a pretty big-time developer in San Carlos over the last few months, and the subject of residential, the economics of residential multifamily development came up. And I basically posed him the question saying, gee, you know, with the concerns about the economy softening, I imagine that business is probably going to go away. And he laughed. And I said, why are you laughing? Do you think the economy's not going to slow down? He goes, no, no, no. I'm sure it will slow down, but right now I'm making this amount of outrageous amount of money off of doing residential projects. And after the economy softens, I will make only this amount of outrageous amount of money on residential projects. So I offer that just as one person's perspective that perhaps the increase in the fees, admittedly significant as they are, that have occurred because of keeping the fees too low for many, many, many years, might not be quite as obstructive as one might think.
Well, I certainly, I certainly understand that your point, and I'd sure like to meet that individual who's making outrageous. But we haven't built a lot of multifamily units here either. So at least not that I can remember to some extent. But anyway, well, I would make a motion that we split it and the, my counter, if there's a second, there may not be a second, so I maybe just.
Before you make that motion, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Sort of like the sewer problems on the rates years ago. I mean, we had this level fee and we're trying to fix it now all at once. Is there any consideration to fixing it over a period of years, two years, three years, five years? Having some sort of graduated scale that would bring it into line over the next several years? Was that discussed or studied or is it an option? Can we?
It's an option that the council could choose to follow that path. However, we would, we would come back each year, each time we wanted to change it again to introduce a new ordinance with the new fee amount. If I remember right, that's not something we could do one time to increase it over several years, is it?
Can we just vote on it and now say, look, we're going to, we're going to change this to this new fee over the next four years and prorate it?
Just an answer to the question about, you could do multi-year increases, but I think that would create a drafting issue right now to introduce the ordinance. I mean, we'd want, we'd have to have all those details so that you could properly introduce the ordinance. So we'd have to postpone it, which I'm not sure, I mean, you're at the stage you are now as there's a motion to amend.
A little late to ask?
Part of my, part of my.
It's not illegal to amend. It's just, I'm just.
Part of my, what I'm trying to get at too is because if I, if we lower this, it'll force us to some extent next year to look at it, it'll force us the year after to look at it, the year after that, and the year after that. And we should be looking at this, in my opinion, every single year, whether we change it or not, I don't know. But we should at least be looking at it. And I don't know whether that's.
Well, one of the things, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, one of the things that's included in this ordinance is the, in our adjustment each year. So we would at least have that adjuster and not necessarily have to come back to council each year as we look at that fee.
When you say in our adjuster, I'm sorry, I missed that part. What, what are you talking about?
Inflation at an engineering rate.
Exactly.
Sure. You know that. What, what is that again? Say again? I'm sorry. I didn't hear it. I don't say didn't hear it.
It's, the engineering news record is a.
Engineering news record? Okay. Did I see that in this report at all?
Yes.
I did? Okay.
That's a publication.
I see E and R, but I didn't remember seeing the detail of it.
Okay. And that's kind of a.
So let me, let me take a little bit of control of this. So we have a, we have a substitute motion on the floor to take the staff's recommendation to change multifamily to five grand.
There's no second to it.
No, and that's what I'm going to ask. Is there a second? So I will second.
Oh, okay.
And so we have Bob's substitute motion. Do we have any discussion?
Yes. This is one I'll throw in that.
Matt?
I'm fine with the way it's set. I'm actually hugely disappointed that so many train cars have gone by before we got to this because this is not going to affect Transit Village, this is not going to affect Wheeler Plaza. And those are our two biggest opportunities and we missed them. And perhaps even that's why the rates have to be what they are. Because, you know, potentially we could have had quite a bit of revenue based on two of the largest residential projects we've seen in the history of this town in a long, long time. The only thing I can think of that has been bigger or on the scale of these two projects is what was done up on Crestview back in the, when was that?
Seventies.
In the seventies. And we missed it. And I'm, like I said, I'm hugely disappointed that we missed it.
Did we miss it?
Yes, we did.
I just want to know that there's building permits on both those projects?
At this moment, there isn't.
There isn't?
They're still under review.
But they're entitled.
They're entitled.
The projects have been entitled.
But you have to pull the building permit.
Correct.
So therefore, we didn't miss it.
Well, I heard the last time that we missed it.
Well.
So the story is, the story has changed since the last council meeting, let's put it that way. Because I asked this before and I was told we missed it, so.
So the ordinance, if introduced today, would have to be brought back for adoption the next meeting and then 30 days after that. So there could be potential.
Could be building permits pulled.
Yeah.
And when they pull, when they have large projects, they pull building permits for every single house or every single unit?
So for Transit Village.
They never did, but I mean.
For Transit Village, they're pulling permits for building 1 to 4 first, and then the next phase is 4 to 8.
Right. So in other words, theoretically, 1 to 4 could be covered or be free, but the next one's perhaps wouldn't be.
Right.
Okay. And same thing with Wheeler Plaza?
Wheeler is going to do it all at once.
All at once. They're going to pull them all at once. Okay. All right.
Okay. Ron?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm clear on what I'm voting on, so.
That's always a good idea.
Bob, what was the number that you were proposing for?
So what we have, the original notion was 10,811 and 6,828. Okay. That's the original motion. Mine is just to substitute $5,000 for the multifamily.
All right. And then my second question is for staff, Gracer Jay. You mentioned that engineering news record. Is that the, would that be built in? In other words, is that the inflation piece that would be built in after that and we would not necessarily have to come back and review it?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's based on, you know, whatever the, I guess, construction CPI is? Is that basically what it is?
That's correct. Industry constructed, construction standards, they create an index that essentially is, revolves around construction cost in various cities and things like that.
I'm more comfortable with that.
Excuse me, through the chair. And we're not allowed to raise it higher than that in the future?
We've just added language in the ordinance to say that it would annually adjust itself.
Right.
Council would be free to come back at any point, ask staff to bring a new ordinance that would raise the fee higher if you chose to.
Okay. Any further discussion? So the vote is on Bob's substitute motion. If it passes, then that's what we're doing. If it fails, then Mark's original staff recommendation motion is still on the floor. So Crystal, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Overt?
No.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to item 9C, which is consideration of adopting a resolution approving an agreement with the Peninsula Joint Powers Board relating to the Peninsula Corridor Electrification Project and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. Jay, you're a popular guy tonight.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director, once again, and it's not a sewer item. That's good. We'll move forward. And tonight we have an item that will, we'll ask you to essentially adopt a resolution for the cooperative agreement that we need for the Peninsula Corridor Electrification Project. But first of all, we have some guests from the Caltrain Modernization Program. Casey Frommson is here. She's from External Affairs, and she wants to give you guys an update on the modernization program as it stands today. And then I'll follow that up with a quick few slides on the agreement that we're asking you to approve.
Good evening.
Hello, councilmembers. Thanks for having us here today. It's been over a year since we were here last, so we're happy to give you an update on where we are on the program. And then we're really grateful for Jay's work on working with us on the agreement to make sure that we have a path that's clearly defined for the project as it goes through San Carlos. So I'll run through this quickly as a little background. I think everyone's aware here of where Caltrain runs, from San Francisco all the way down to Gilroy. But the important part of this slide is highlighting the portion that Caltrain owns. So all of the improvements we talk about for the Caltrain Modernization Program are on the parts of the corridor that Caltrain owns from San Francisco down to San Jose. South of that is owned by Union Pacific, which is a freight railroad. This slide just talks about the ridership growth that we've seen. It's been explosive on the corridor. We actually got our numbers last week at the board meeting that were roughly around 65,000 riders every single day on Caltrain now. And that increase really started in 2004 when we changed the service to a baby bullet service and introduced that, which made it competitive with driving. So since that time, we've seen the spike. The one little dip we saw was with the recession a few years ago. What that looks like is this. a few years ago. What that looks like is this. And so if you ride Caltrain, it's crowded. There's a lot of people standing, and this is in both directions. The traditional commute is typically south going into San Francisco and the city. But now, because there's so many destinations along the corridor, we're seeing a bidirectional commute, which is really unusual for commuter rail lines. So that means in both directions now, we're having trains that are at capacity and a lot of people trying to use this because they don't want to be on the congested freeways and highways. So not only do we hear about Caltrain needing to modernize and get more capacity for riders, we're also hearing it from businesses as well. In 2014, an organization was formed called the Caltrain Commuter Coalition. It's made up of the businesses that are on this slide, along with many others. And one of their main goals is to help Caltrain modernize because they want to have employees get to their businesses and have a commute that is meaningful for their employees and they're not being stuck in traffic. One more interesting statistic on this slide is 60% of Caltrain riders are choice riders, which means they have access to a car but are choosing to get on Caltrain. If all of those riders were out on the freeways, that would be even more congestion on our local roads and on our major freeways. So a brief update now on where we are with the program. There's two main projects, the Advanced Signal System and Electrification Project. The Advanced Signal System is already in construction. It's completed, actually, construction. We're in the testing phase. So what I'll focus on today is Electrification Project. Again, it's the area that's between San Francisco and San Jose that Caltrain owns. It's an overhead contact system, so overhead wires, and then electric trains. We'll be replacing about 75% of our fleet, taking it from diesel today to electric. We'll continue to go 79 miles per hour. We'll increase the number of trains we can have per direction. And then I'll talk in a minute about the capacity increases we can get with electrification vehicles. It's a mixed fleet service in the beginning. We'll still have some diesel fleet, but in the future, we do want to have it fully electrified and then longer trains. And then we'll also continue to have tenant service with Freight, ACE, Capital Corridor, and Amtrak running underneath the wires in the future. They're there today, and they'll continue to be there in the future. This slide just highlights some of the major benefits from it. Obviously, huge greenhouse gas benefits and the reduction in air pollution. But there will also be quieter trains. So the engine from diesel trains is noisier than what it will be with electric trains. We also see the ridership increases, reduction of cars on the roads, and then also the economic activity. This slide gets a little bit at the service improvement. So it will be a different service when we have electric trains. They can stop and start much faster than diesel ones. Our most popular train today are the baby bullets. And with diesel trains, they can make five to six stops in 60 minutes. But when we have electric trains, they could do that in 45 minutes. Or if we wanted to change the schedule another way, we can keep that 60-minute time, which is competitive to driving. But instead of making six stops, we make 13 stops. And that's really what we get by having these electric trains versus the diesel ones we have today. We threw one example in here for a station for Redwood City. Instead of three stops, maybe they could see five stops. We don't have the exact schedule outlined right now for electrification, but we have the capability now to dramatically change it and have it look and feel different for riders. So we're excited to do that in the future as we get closer to finishing the project. So where we are today is we environmentally cleared this project in January of 2015. The board adopted it. We have two major contracts, one for the design-build infrastructure, so the folks that will put in the poles and wires, and then one for the new electric trains. Right now, we currently expect to award the contracts in July of this year. So we're making major milestones, and we're going towards that date of being in revenue service in 2021, with trains initially coming in in 2020 and then their final delivery in mid-2021. There's many groups that we work with to keep everyone informed of the project. And I also would like to thank councilmember Collins. As a member of the LPMG Group, he's been there for years now following this along, and we really appreciate the local lens he's provided to the project. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions or turn it over to...
Questions. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that very informative presentation. Three questions, one of which admittedly is just out of personal curiosity, though it does involve the transit system. Do you folks have a sense yet, a design sense, of what the height and appearance of the catenary structures are going to look like? Because the one thing, context, the one thing that had always kind of concerned me a little bit about this is my understanding is they're fairly high. And if someplace down the road, if, 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 there's high-speed rail that comes through and there's multiple tracks that get built through San Carlos, then we have a tall structure with another tall thing on top of it would just look rather odd, if it's that tall. So how tall is it?
I want to say that the poles are around 20 feet. I'm going to look back for 30, 40 feet. And so those would be along the corridor. What we are doing, though, as part of the mitigation measures, is there was an interest in making sure we didn't touch trees if possible. And so what we analyzed in the EIR was a worst-case scenario of having poles on the outside of the tracks, kind of all the way down the corridor. As part of our design, as we get farther along, we'll be seeing, can we minimize that and maybe having one pole on one side so that it goes over or one in the middle. So even though there will be poles, we're going to try and minimize while we can the number of them. And also, in certain areas where there are stations, we're making sure that they are not interfering with any of the historic structures. And to your point with high-speed rail, should they finish their environmental document and come on the corridor, they're going to be able to use the same poles. So they wouldn't be adding additional poles on top of it. It'd be a similar infrastructure that we have in place.
Fair enough. And actually, I should have been clearer. I mean, basically, the concern I was voicing is because we have already throughout most of San Carlos elevated the train tracks on the berm. I don't know how tall the berm is. It's probably, what, 20, 25 feet, something like that? So basically, if you've got 20, 25 feet and 40 feet on top of that, the top of these things is going to be way up there, which is potentially... let's just say that I hope that whatever mitigations you can come up with and a very attractive catenary design, we get the best crack at it because we're probably going to need it. You touched on my second question in passing, trees. When we approved the Transit Village project, that was a key component of the approval process, was requiring a number of trees to be planted. And I know that there's been a number of concerns voiced by people on the east side in our community who, when they heard about electrification and the impact potentially on trees, were like, well, great. Sort of like they agreed to put trees in to get the project approved, and now they come up with electrification and take all the trees out. So where do we stand on the trees? Are there still going to be a significant number of new trees added or not?
So that goes back to the design and where we are right now. We need to progress the design further to see if we can minimize as much as we can any impacts to trees. But should there be any impacts to the trees, we do have outlined in our EIR a tree mitigation plan so that we'll have a replacement of trees for any that we take out. And then we're also following the city ordinance. So if there's something unique that San Carlos has, if it's a heritage tree, if it's a certain type, then we're following that order as well. So should there be any trees removed, we are putting them back in the corridor. That plan still needs more vetting, and then we will be working closely with the city as well as the city arborist on that. So we're not quite to that phase yet, but we imagine, and we know that's an issue that's of importance to communities up and down the corridor. So we understand the sensitivity with that one.
And it's not unique to us. It's just, we had this major project that came through, and that was a very significant component.
Yeah, I recall.
Yes. But Ron wants them all to be eucalyptus trees, by the way, anything you plant. He doesn't. He hates eucalyptus trees. Last question, which is partially for my own education. Trains that have both riders and bicyclists on them. Every time you add the capacity to support a bike or store a bike on the train, does that take away capacity for a human being to sit someplace on the train?
That's a very good question. We actually have had many policy discussions at the Caltrain Board on that very issue. As we're getting these new trains, we have an opportunity to figure out what the right balance is for capacity inside. And it is a balance of different needs. So we are currently in a conversation about should we have bathrooms on board because those are also taking up space that could be for seats or people. And you are correct. We carry roughly 60,000 bikers a day on Caltrain, and we have two bike cars right now on a five-car train. And where bikes are located, you cannot sit or stand.
Yeah, just in... I mean, what concerns me about it, but if the goal is to... one of the goals is to minimize or increase the maximum benefits of climate change, if putting a bike on the train bumps somebody off of the train, then that person's going to go back in a car, more than likely. And so it's hard for me to see how, from an environmental point of view, even though bicycling is actually much better than driving a car, how there's a net advantage. But that's something we can talk about later. You answered my basic question, and thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Bob?
The cities, you had a list or a map here of all the cities that are on the train tracks. Will you be going to each city to get an approval as we're... and by the way, I support this tonight, this resolution. Will you be going to each city to get this resolution?
Every city within the project limit, so basically San Jose to San Francisco, but that is correct.
How many do you have so far?
I believe we have three signed. We have roughly four going this month, six lined up for next month for council meeting. So we're trying to get all of the cities complete by the June, July timeframe.
And if one of the cities, or two of the cities, or three of the cities say no, what happens? It has to be unanimous?
It doesn't have to be unanimous, but it will make the project delivery more difficult. And we are trying to get every single...
How so? You're going to go around them?
Yeah. We're just going to skip right through them. No, I mean, the purpose of these agreements is really to get some clarity on both sides of what the city expects for the project and then what the contractors...
I get it. I'm just asking, what happens if three... and I could pick a couple out for you if you don't know them already.
I can pick them too.
Exactly. And they're going to vote no. So what does that do to the project, the entire project? I'm just trying to understand it. It's going to delay it or...
No, we don't think it's going to delay it. It's going to be less convenient than if we had these in place. And I think...
How would that be? I'm sorry. How would it be less convenient?
For instance, we put into these guidelines what we expect the review times to be for a city. And if a city doesn't want to sign up for this, we can go through their regular process, which may, for whatever reason, stretch into six months. And so...
And they still say no. Then what happens?
Well, I mean, there could be an issue if we needed their permit to do something for some of the projects.
I guess what I'm getting at, and I apologize, I'm convoluting this. I should have just asked directly. You need their permission to go through their city?
It depends on the activity.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
So, and that actually depends then on each city. So what we would need from each city could vary. For some cities, we may need virtually nothing because all of the work is exactly in the Caltrain right-of-way, and we would never need to go outside of it.
So in other words, not every city is going to have the building that we're going to have? Or the add-on, the OCRs or whatever that...
Every city will have poles that go through it because it's on...
I get that. Yeah, I get that.
But some cities will have more infrastructure than others, such as we have these traction power facilities that help connect the wires. So that's...
The bottom line is, you're saying, if somebody says no, it'll eventually happen, you think, but it could take a lot longer.
That's our belief.
Okay. So eventually, it's going to happen, but somehow, but it could take longer. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Matt?
You mentioned about the ability to do more stops and things like that. But are there not other technologies available, even within diesel or hybrid, that give you that same ability?
In our environmental document, we looked into that. A lot of people had other suggestions of can you just use a better diesel locomotive or a dual mode. And when we looked at the performance you get, EMUs are really the top performance for... sorry, the electric trains we're looking at. It's called electric multiple units. And really, we have 27 stations between San Francisco and San Jose, and they're very close together. And so a train that's able to stop and start the fastest and have the best performance is the best for this corridor. And when we looked at the other models, they were not as good as this one. Some are much better than what we have out there today. Many of our diesel locomotives are pretty old, but they're not as good as the EMU. And the EMU also provides the best environmental benefits as well.
But let me ask this. How much of this going to electrification is really tied to high-speed rail and the fact that it's an electric service?
Well, Caltrain actually has wanted electrification long before high-speed rail was even created. So there certainly is a partnership in that we desired to electrify the corridor, and we also needed funding from different partner agencies. And so we are getting roughly, you know, a third to half of the funding from high-speed rail. But a high-speed rail needs to go through their own environmental document. They're only planning process before they can come on the corridor. So we believe we've had that conversation a few times and feel confident that we would have gone with electrification route as soon as we could. And it just happened that in the last few years, we had the regional partnership of many different funding sources to be able to do this.
Thanks, Matt. Ron?
Thanks, Cameron. Thanks, Casey. Great presentation, and nice to see you come to our town. At least not in the San Trans building, but to be here. You said earlier, and I think it's not, you didn't say what you meant to say. You said something about there's 60,000 people on bikes a day. And I think you meant to say 60,000 passengers a day, right? We don't have 60,000 people with bikes.
There's 6,000 passengers.
Six thousand. Maybe I misheard it.
Yeah. I could have done it after hearing a lot of sewer talk at the end of the night. But it is...
Why, we learned a lot.
I learned a lot. And there's 65,000 riders. And of that...
65? We're up to 65 now.
We're up to 65,000 riders a day.
I know we've had this discussion about bathrooms and bikes and stuff. But, and I don't know if I read it in one of the 12 emails a day I seem to be getting from Caltrain or high-speed rail these days or not. But I'm wondering where we are in thinking about bike lockers at the different stations. Now, I have a theory, it may be completely wrong, that if you have a lot of bike lockers at a lot of stations, you might have less people taking bikes on trains. Is that a valid theory?
Yeah, absolutely. So in addition to the conversation the board had about what we do on the train, it was very clear that we need to do more for providing consistent bike parking next to the train so that there are folks that are able and want to park their bike on one side can. So the board made a commitment for a $3 million capital investment into bike parking along the corridor. And we're in the middle of a study right now called the Bike Parking Management Study that's looking at what's the right mix to have at different stations, you know, because there's a variety of different bike lockers for an E locker, a valet, the standard racks. And so we're getting a lot of the feedback right now for that study to help influence on where the capital funds are going to. But I think it's very clear that we need to do more on that side because we think biking is a great resource. But where possible, if people can park it, we'll be able to provide more space for people on the train.
Also, for some reason, I didn't have a meeting down for this month. There is a meeting this month, is that correct?
There is.
And it's the high-speed rail people?
It is.
All right. And then the last thing, I think, Bob, I understand your concern about different cities want different things. And it was my understanding that you were going to work with the cities that had an issue and find out what level of infrastructure that they were going to allow. So let's take Atherton, for example. And I'm just, I'm picking them because, I don't know why I'm picking them.
Because they're going to be on that list.
Because they're going to be on that list. Is that a case where you might just opt for that center pole and down the middle, which would not require their okay?
For the poles, it really is driven by the mitigation document of reducing the number of impacts to the tree. So it's not just, you know, can we just do one? If it means having one pole on one side that's longer and stretches over, that might be better. So it's a combination of how do we minimize that for trees? But then we also have to make sure that it's functional for the system. So we do have to add in a technical layer and that maintenance part of it. But it is not just purely picking amongst our favorite cities of poles and infrastructure.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Ron. Thank you, Casey. Jay, I believe you have a couple more slides.
Back, Crystal, you don't even need to call that one up. It's okay. Actually, I think the questions in Casey's presentation have covered the basics of the other slides that I wanted to show. But what I wanted to assure council is that we've been working with the Caltrain staff on the agreement. We have their commitment to us to help with the aesthetics of the poles and the catenary system that are in the area of the historic station. We have their commitment that they'll work with us on the tree mitigation and the tree planting and the tree trimming and removal that's necessary in order to try to minimize that impact. We have their commitment to help us with the traffic impacts that will be related to the work and the placement of a few of the poles that will be within the city's right-of-way near Old County Road and Holly Street. We know there's going to be traffic impacts as a result of that. And so we feel like the agreement's in good shape as we go forward. They'll be paying a deposit for review that the city has to do, and the turnaround times and things like that, we feel are reasonable. This is something I worked with Greg on, and I think we've got a good agreement for this particular project going forward. Now it's really time for them. They need to start getting their sort of final designs ready, bring them forward to the city for our review, and then we'll issue the permits as needed. So that's my summary of it.
Thank you, Jay. Is there any further questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on one second.
I'm sorry.
Did you have...
I was going to make a motion, but he beeped it in.
Let me just ask, is there any public comment on this item? All right. Now you two can fight it. I don't...
No, no.
I want to do a motion.
No.
I move to adopt Resolution 2016-...
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Resolution to the City Council of the City of San Carlos, approving an agreement with the Peninsula Joint Powers Board relating to the Peninsula Corridor Electrification Project and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement.
I guess I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Matt?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, I think one of the things that Bob was driving at a little bit with his questions about the other cities and so forth is that this project's going to happen whether we vote yes or not, peers. I am strongly opposed to high-speed rail. I don't want anybody to misconstrue the idea that I would vote for this to be that I'm in favor of high-speed rail. I'm not. And I wish Caltrain was coming to us, asking for an electrification project separate and apart from high-speed rail, actually. And I question whether they would be doing that because of the advances in diesel locomotive and so forth, if, you know, given the option. We had this discussion one time before, and the mayor pointed out the things that he knew about those advances and versus, you know, how much money you have to spend and the different aesthetics that you get between the two systems. It would just seem to me to make a lot more sense just to rest on a better diesel product than to be going with electrification. But all that said, since this is going to happen, it's better to have an agreement between us and you guys than not to have an agreement. So I'm sort of forced into the position of voting yes.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Any further discussion? If not, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocot?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.